You want to open your sandwich a little bit?
No, no. I'm good. I'm just so excited about getting started.
Get you off balance.
My balance has been good all day.
We're already ahead of you. You're already done.
I've been way ahead ever since six o'clock this morning. Okay, so why don't we get called leading the order. And roll call.
Director Jones.
Here.
Director Mabachlin.
Here.
Director Bernstein.
Present.
Director Crowley.
Present.
And Director Salano.
Here. Now can we stand for a play?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
So, next item on the gen is public comments. We have two people. We have Jim Lewis and Pamela Jones. Bronze, it'll be okay.
President Jones and directors, my name's Jim Lewis. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you during the goal setting session. For many years before I retired, I was in the industry of property management. And one of our biggest tasks was taking care of facilities. What we found is that it was far easier to repair facilities than it ever was to repair people problems. They were much more challenging. In that respect, the fire district spends a lot of time, and rightfully so, on stations, on equipment, on apparatus, and also on your staff. But I'm here to urge you to spend what time is appropriate in enhancing, improving relations with three particular people groups. The first would be the general public, which I'm included. You're doing much in terms of public relations and information. I think more can be done in order to educate and prepare citizens for the challenges that they face. The second area would be your own firefighters and staff. To include them, whether it's to purchase an all-electric truck or any other major decision, is to solicit and appreciate and value whatever their thinking, ideas, suggestions might be. And the third group, since my time's limited, would be the cities you serve, three cities in the county, is to include them to the extent possible in a respectful, responsible way with the items in which you're wrestling with, in which they will be a party to. And as you go through your goals, I would hope you would keep these three groups in mind in selecting the priorities for the year. Thank you.
Pamela Jones.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Jones, directors and staff. Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park. I belong to a number of organizations in which I am a board member or a core member. I speak solely for myself as a resident in the Bellhaven neighborhood of Menlo Park. Oh, and I'm also related to the mayor of Menlo Park. So I need to make it very transparent and very clear who I represent. All right. The two things that I have is, one, again, looking at the coordination of emergency services within all the areas that are covered by the Menlo Park Fire District, cities, police department, the area of Fair Oaks, I believe that you have. Remembering that this area is a connection between San Mateo County and Santa Clara County, so it's logical that we have a dynamic and robust coalition here. And it's never more important than it is right now today that we have emergency service coordinated, deeply coordinated emergency services, because that also includes pandemics and epidemics. So I think right now we can really see how significant it is that we look at how to just get along, because it really is a matter that otherwise we would have done it. The second thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, changing the subjects here, and that is, how do we coordinate with the city of Menlo Park on doing road signage? You know, you have what you can offer, maybe it's, you know, funding, I don't know. But for example, we have signage outside, painted signage outside of 77, Station 77, and I don't know if you've gone by there, but you should, because it doesn't look to me like professional signage that really fits your needs. And also, there really should be one of those flashing signs so that when people come around that sharp bend, if you look at how Chilco has been redesigned, it's a really sharp, it's at least a 45-degree turn there when you come to the railroad tracks. That's going to prevent, present some significant problems. Another area that, you know, is close to home is on Sevier. You may know the street as Savier, but if you're a longtime resident, we pronounce it severe. The city put in some new bumps, humps. Okay, they're actually mountains that they put in there. I don't know if that's what you requested. I know that traffic has to slow down so you can access Hamilton Avenue and get to Willa Road. But if you look at those, they're very, very, very hard on a car. I drive a Fit, and there's really no safe way I can go around them or through them. So it seems to me that if we can, again, just get along with the city of Menlo Park, planning, traffic, all of those areas there, so that what you need is actually what is needed, and not something that is just a blob of stuff put on the cement to slow, you know, put in the middle of the street to slow people down. Again, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Jim and Deborah.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Have you saw the road?
Road?
It's the road that you had named.
S.T.I.V.E.R.
Sevier.
Savier, if you're doing the French. Sevier, if you're Japanese.
Correct. He said the right that you made, and you could go slowly up to the center, that's up there.
Okay, so if you take Chilco from, there's two different streets. Okay, there's a street, Chilco, that's in front of 777.
Right.
Okay, and that's been reconfigured as a part of the Facebook Development Agreement. And there's a sharp right-hand turn.
Right.
When you're coming west.
Yeah.
Okay.
So towards the station. Okay, there's also a place for people to cross. And it's a nice area to do a three-wheel drift or a four-wheel drift in a car, because you could do 40 on Chilco in there. So when you make that turn, there's the fire station.
For the chief, Carol.
So there runs between Ivy and Hamilton. Sorry.
I know.
So for those speed bumps that, for the speed bumps that Pamela alluded to.
I know. Hold on. Daniel, hold on.
For the speed bumps that Pamela alluded to, we didn't have any input in that. Is that correct?
John said he'll look into it. He's the one that deals with the city.
Do we have, are there cutouts?
It wouldn't be the first time that Menlo Park has done something that we didn't know about, but typically, in recent years, they've been pretty good about working through fire prevention, which is the appropriate entity in our organization to work with that would deal with any type of traffic control device.
Yeah, I know that you mentioned that the cutouts, or the speed bumps that we collaborate on, or for, with, like, the cities, or would have the cutouts in them, and I don't know if this is.
Is she cutouts that we double?
Yeah.
They're doing a whole traffic calming measure in that whole neighborhood there. And so there is some trial stuff they're doing before they do it permanent.
Okay.
And I did work with them to ensure, we can't check rates and add all our specifications. So all look into this one and see where that falls.
Okay, I'm just concerned that, I mean, for sure, I understand the need for traffic mitigation devices in that area. It's so congested, but we got to get through there too, and it's already tight enough as it is. And especially in that area where you're talking about, around Station 77, or the Facebook bus terminal, it's bombing. It's just ridiculous.
So I'm working on that too. They're just now submitting new Chilco road improvements for that space as they build the city park. And I'm actually working with the city to improve Chilco, to improve our response now that they're connected to the space.
Okay, thank you.
I think this question is a broader question, not only for that particular area that Mr. Jones talked about, but I think all of Menlo Park, all of East Palo Alto, and the county are.
Senior SOC, it's one of the recommendations, the standards of coverage.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because Pamela was alluding, because I wanted to find out that we had any, but thank you, Carol and John.
All right, one last thing. This actually is brought up in the joint meeting with Menlo Park, so this is not a new item.
Yeah, I know, but it's, I know.
So there aren't any other speakers, and I thank you both for sharing your inputs, and we will take those comments and try to find appropriate home for them so we can begin to work. Wove that into, weave that into our process today. So everybody is clear about what we're going into the regular gen item to discuss and capture fire for goals for 2020. Everyone knows that this is just a phase one, a two-phase process. The phase one is just to collect information, gather information that have been out there for the last two to three years here at the board during this goal, and try to make sure that everything is captured, so that in phase two, we spend more time with the consultants to help us to really sort out any due patients, try to help us to kind of prioritize, and then define a home for those particular goals, whether it's within the committee, whether we have to create a new committee, add a committee, or whether it needs to be placed with the chief and his operation. So it's not, this is not the final step of the process, so next time we set up a meeting, we'll be with the consultants to try to help us get through that. So before we get started and looking at what the material that the chief and staff have sent us, I want to turn it over to the chief, and there's, I assume that you or Manny's got something you want to say, or my understanding is correct.
Well, we'll walk through it. So if you're ready, I'm ready to jump in.
Absolutely, I think Johnny's gonna have to.
So directors, you know, I did, I spoke with Director Jones. We talked about kind of putting parameters around not just the goals from last year, but ones from the previous year, meaning that we would take two years of data. We could have done more, you know, obviously have three years, five years, 10 years worth of information related to board goals, process, and so forth, but we decided just to make it for two years. Even with the two years, you can see there's a whole bunch of different things that have come up. Maybe they're no longer priorities, maybe they're more priority, I mean, I don't want to assume any of them, but I wanted to list them. You also have on desk items, you have two handouts, Dirk and Jones will go over, and then you have handouts to Chief Navarre who's going to encompass when he does the presentation on strategic planning and accreditation and where we are with that, because that's relevant as well. So walking you through the package just real quick, I tried to go back, as I mentioned, two years. It starts out with 2018 and what your board goals were there. It jumps ahead to February then, it's on page one, February of 2019, when Stu Geary came in, he established at least six themes. By March, and Stu's second meeting with you last year, he came up with, and I assisted him on recommendations for planning, program flow and process. That was not completely adopted, so that's an outlier out there in regards to how the process needs to work, which is important as well. He and I both identified that, I think you guys had some discussion around it, we never really resolved it. Second part on page three was board interactions and recommended rules of engagement. Again, those were never adopted. Part of that, I think, had to do with item number three, which was committees do not initiate new actions and work programs unless, nor do they start new research projects. I know there's some different opinions on how that should work. Obviously, this needs to get worked out at some point within this whole process as well. Fast forward to June of 2019, you see that you had basically a subcommittee that was put together, because you were not getting to the goals last year. Those directors, Crowley and Bernstein, they both put in their recommendations or what they felt about the meeting that they had on July 15. If you look, both of those are slightly different, so that wasn't reconciled either, so that's something, again, to go back and note. And then I listed in there what I do with the staff every year, and I just gave you at the beginning and the end of the year 2019, was on page six of 16, you'll see the fire chief's goals, and a lot of that I'll just report out at the end of the year, which I did. If they're completed, not completed, if progress is ongoing, there's a whole list of projects there that we both did and accomplished, but equally did not. And those are generated, maybe those things, maybe things that the board wouldn't necessarily, he isn't involved with, but those are things relevant to how the organization needs to run. Page seven of 16 goes into items that in your January 2020 meeting, you said, hey, we want committees to take these tasks on, and you listed those. So those can't be ignored, those need to be put on the agendas as well. So again, substantial workload with that as well. And then on page eight of 16, you have the SOC, the standards of coverage, the risk assessment, which had a number of recommendations in there that I listed, which I also said to an email we would address at our next board meeting, meaning staff would address some of these things. Because again, the consultant, the vendor, did what they were doing in consultation of time, from Chief Navarre, myself, and others, but we in no way influenced their work. So we haven't even responded to that yet either, which I think we need to do. So you can hear staff's version of what, how we interpret some of these recommendations, which, again, I'm very happy with what they did. What isn't in here is all those other, not necessarily recommendations, but other items that came up within that report that I think are worthy of looking at as well. But again, this was a 16-page staff report, so I don't want to overdo it. If you go to page 13 of 16, we had our staff meeting last week on Thursday. That means it's a mid-year, it's also required under accreditation. We were already doing that before, it's a chance for myself, the chiefs, the senior managers to get together, talk about what I see, what they see, what we accomplished, what we're going to hopefully get done the next year. So page 13 of 16 is my goals and priorities currently, until you tell me something different. But my number one is accreditation, strategic planning, and standards of coverage. Obviously, the SOP component we have, and Manny, like I said, will do a presentation here in a couple minutes on where we are. Number two was the deputy chief for bringing on board three battalion chiefs, which is in progress. And then also, number three was progressively addressing the Atherton quote-unquote equity issues, and we could talk about that hopefully today a little bit too, because that's going to be your next board meeting in Atherton. We'll encompass that. And then a whole bunch of different things underneath there, which I don't need to go through, but are relevant. On page 14 of 16, so that goes in, the presentation will happen, I just, I'll skip right past it for a second, because it gets into the actual discussion. So the point, as Director Jones mentioned, is to have a facilitator at the next meeting. It was intent to have one meeting, but we couldn't pull that off with a facilitator at the time, so we decided, hey, let's just do two. In short, instead of one six-hour, we did two, three hours. That way, at least, we keep this thing moving, which was something that last year became, as you know, laborious and problematic. The other part of that was use this meeting as a collector. You could use three hours. I don't know if we're going to need all three hours, maybe need more than three hours, who knows? But to gather up everything in one meeting, including things today that maybe you brought in, that you're, maybe you'll think of during the meetings, so we'll have to have some sort of a parking lot place to put things as well. I sent you one last night. That one was district elections, because obviously, the county is asking us whether or not we're going to move to district elections. Nobody, like, are we being sued? Like, some of the entities have been sued, or they've come in and done presentations. None of that has happened, but we have to respond back to the elections office on what we're doing. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to assume what we're doing, so that has to be something the board needs to answer, whether you do it today or not, it should be at least included in the process of action on it for the board. And finally in this too, as I'll finish in here, so you can see, you also have items that affect your board liaisons, your committees, and so forth, and one of those just came up. So Menlo Park just had their goal setting, which was an opportunity for the district to say, hey, these are things we talked about, these are things that hopefully are priorities to the city. Those included on the bottom page 14, the sale and purchase of 1283 Willa Road. That's in play, but we really haven't had any formal negotiations with the city of Menlo Park on that piece of property since they purchased it, even though they say they're interested in selling it to us now. Update and expand our current emergency management services agreement, that's also the SOC from Stu Geary. Build a joint use and standard over to Operation Standard in conjunction with the city of Menlo Park and maybe others. That was something we shared with them before as well. Adopt a district primary response routes, we have that to some degree. It was obviously talked about control devices a minute ago, Pam brought that up. It's always an issue for us in all of our jurisdictions and pretty. Atherton is proposing to put in control devices. North Burrows has a huge issue with that as well that we deal with. Portland Partner with the District on UAS drones, obviously the police department is interested in the safety department certificate. Kim just passed, the fire prevention just passed for Parliament Assembly, so we're going to be very shortly flying drones for solar inspections here at the district, so fire prevention will do that. Work with the Fire District Desk, emergency response issues associated with Facebook proposal 68 through campus. We're doing that. Work with the Fire District Dexbit, the rebuilding of Facebook sponsored Bellhaven Community Center. I have a call scheduled with Facebook on Thursday regarding that. Obviously, that's a big deal for the city, Facebook, the community, and for the fire district, because those plans and items come through prevention. Work with the Fire District Desk, operational and safety concerns associated with homeless encampments, of which there are a number, and it's a real issue. It's a real issue for the safety of firefighters as well, especially with a lot of the things that we see associated with that. Finally in there, Director Bernstein, who was not able to meet the Menlo Park meeting as the liaison, and I wasn't able to make it either. Director Jones went and presented for one minute, so I don't know what you get done in a minute, but we're at least letting know our issues with him there. Director Bernstein, three other items in there, which was water pressure, water supply, sprinklers, downtown vulnerability for major fires, because 50% of downtown is older structures, non-sprinkler in many cases. And then also, staff initial reaction to develop proposals that would normally occur suppression if fire prevention were part of city government. Director Bernstein added those as well, which, again, those are all things for liaisons and committees. My point was in this, is I think you all want to be on the same page with agreeing with the liaisons are saying to your constituents, so you have to put some time into that. And I think you also want to define what the committees need to be doing, because that's work that needs to be prioritized, which you started to do in your last meeting, but it isn't the totality of circumstance. Finally, on page 15 of 16 and page 16, I included the board meetings that we had agreed to in the last setting with the board, which was in January, as everybody knows, we're in East Palo Alto. I'll call it the Board Roadshow, right? So that was good, because Director Jones appointed the first person from East Palo Alto, the board of directors, chair, and then president. And then also, in February, we're going to Atherton. We all know there are issues with the council asking for residents to comment on their fire district. The interesting part with their fire department, interesting part is you're the fire board. So it would be good, maybe for people who want to actually talk to the fire board in charge of fire services that we promote, and which we will do, that you're going to be in Atherton to hear any concerns that your constituents who live in the town of Atherton that we also serve have regarding fire services and some of the allegations or issues that Atherton seems to say they have with the fire district. Now, I'm just waiting for, she's going to tell you what the call is here in a minute. It's taken a long time, I do a structured fire, so.
5077 inch 6, this is a huge truck on the county line, inch 4 is script. Responders, trucking fires, respond, N17 Madera, 4017 Madera, USC boys, on the Bay Road and in Menlo Park.
In March, and what I tried to give you here in March, you can see we have Fire Station 77, which we will go to. April was Sher Heights Station 4. May was under incorporate county areas, North Burrows. And June was downtown Menlo Park or Station 6. Last time, I did not have any issues associated with each one of these locations. This is just my suggestion to you for items that could be covered. There's a number of them that affect each one of these areas of the community that we serve, so you can certainly add to those, you can prioritize those, you can do a lot of different things with those. It's completely up to you as the board. Those are things that I'm just aware of, that are either in the queue or the community yourselves are concerned about. So in summary, we need to capture all these goals, or the ones that you want to accomplish this year. And it's a lot, as I started to go through it, including the attachments, which I'll address here in a second. But, you know, there's a lot of things that you want to do. After this, we need to prioritize, hopefully, in the next meeting, what those items are, because the one thing that is always a commodity too is time. How much time do we expect to spend on any one of these or multiple things? Staff time, board packets, board committee meetings, special meetings, study sessions. It's not infinite as to staff time and the ability to do all these things, because again, it's a lot of work, which, again, we're happy to do, as long as hopefully it's in an organized MFB and fashion, would be everybody's role in hoping. The last part here, attachments A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, which are here in the packet as well, going in greater detail, because all I tried to do is carve out in the staff report kind of the bigger portions of, or more appropriate portions of what I thought people had given me over time. So it has both Directors Crowley and Bernstein's complete emails that were sent. It has the complete work plan, goals, and accomplishments that I would have done in 2019, planning goals for 2020. Again, there's more to it. It also includes, which is not listed in here, the Civil Grand Jury reports, Ready for Growth, our response, the follow-up response. There'll probably be a follow-up to the follow-up response, because they put a schedule in there to monitor some of that stuff. So that's relevant in terms of reporting as well. And then lastly, but not, at least importantly, was attachments from other board meetings where at least some progress was made last year regarding setting your goals. And the reason I included that was because there was a lot of attachments that did make it in here that had other things that the board wanted to get done. So it's a lot of different things. So hopefully, today will become more of a funnel, but I'll leave that up to you, and I'll turn it back over to the board president.
Thank you, chief. I think before we move into Manny, we will filter a couple of questions here, and then we'll move into, Joe?
There's a question on what you envisioned for the February meeting with regard to the equity issue, and also, is LAPCO making a presentation, or you hope they will, or what's good, what are you doing with LAPCO?
Yeah, so I asked Martha if she could be there, and if she could be there, not only ask, you know, answer questions, but to speak. I have not heard that, so I'll follow up with her.
And how did you envision sort of the Atherton issue or whatever?
So what I did, if you remember a few years back, we went into, we met with the town council, we did a presentation on fire services. And I envisioned the same thing. I mean, what is it, how does it work? What do we do over there? And I think the general broader community doesn't understand how it works. And I think whatever, for whatever reason, I'm not sure what, I think Manny had a lot to do with it, obviously, the town of Atherton doesn't understand the networking of the system that we have. Because again, they're proposing two stations would replace five. The report, as you know, is not factually correct. Our vendor from BSCI said the same thing. We're talking to them about what they saw within the matrix report. And again, we also have other individuals, as you know, that are involved, they're working on that right now.
Can I follow up?
Okay.
I just, I have two comments. One is, I don't think we should use their vocabulary. So talking about this as an equity issue seems to me is playing that game. This has nothing to do with anything about equity. This has to do maybe with a bunch of rich people keeping all their wealth, or something like that, but I'm not sure that's what normal people would call equity. So I don't think we should get sort of pulled into that. We can call it, it's a separation issue. That's really what affects us. And we're not working on equity. We've never addressed the equity issue. We're not trying to make sure that everybody gets equity out of their tax dollar, and I just don't think we should even use that vocabulary. So that's one point. The second thing, though, is I have a feeling sometimes, I don't know what we do, so I kind of... kind of talk at different levels. Atherton keeps saying the same thing and we respond. We never address them. I mean, we don't say, your report was really flawed. It's going to cost you twice as much as you say. You're only going to cover two-thirds of the district. You're going to use Menlo Park for your mutual aid to do what leaves a big hole. So you're covering two-thirds of your city and you're leaving one-third for the Menlo Park for which they'll get no money. I mean, why are they going to do that? I mean, at some point, we ought to go head-to-head, but on the other hand, do we want to be aggressive about it? I'm not sure of the answer, but I think this really bears some careful thinking about what we're going to do here. Because when we keep talking about, hey, everybody, we got five stations, and the five stations send trucks into, or engines into your area, somehow that just doesn't resonate. I just don't think we really respond to what their issues are. And I don't know if it's helpful.
Any other comments?
Robert. Thank you, Robert. One is the location at Station Three. That's where we're going to have our meeting, right?
Correct.
Well, the last meeting that we had at Station Two, we had issues with a lot of visual stuff and support relative to that. And that's even a smaller station.
Which actually would be helpful with acoustics, and we're bringing in a professional to do it next time, so.
There you go. Okay. Thank you for that, Robert. And then secondly, I can agree with Chuck. You know, we really haven't addressed, they talk about, you know, that they're really satisfied with our services, but yet I don't think they understand the true significance of what they're actually doing by doing, by setting up what they want to set up. And I think we need to attack it. Chuck makes a good point to say, wait a minute, that report was flawed. You're going to affect the entire public safety response system, not only in our fire district, but the entire county and whatever our auto aid and mutual aid involves with the city of Palo Alto, Alameda County, Fremont. So it has a tremendous, a tremendous effect on not only our fire district, but basically three counties when you're really looking at it. And that report was flawed. That consultant that they used was flawed. I mean, I don't think we, you know, we've really been really, I think, Chief, you and your staff have been very professional with this. And I don't know how many times I can post this relative to, you know, we need, if we're looking at to do anything, we need to consolidate fire services, not separate them. I don't know what the position of LAFCO is going to be, but I kind of think I know what it's going to be by reading some of the responses. But I agree with Chuck. I think we need to go head-on with them. And, you know, they talk about these residents. Well, I've never heard, Robert, I've never heard any complaints from any Atherton residents, and I've been on the board nine years. Have you heard any complaints from Atherton?
I think, finish your statement because this is not, I think, the venue to air all of what we, the strategy. I think we need to have the study session. We need to come up with a strategy. So finish your comment and then we'll...
I'll just end my comment with that. Okay. Yeah, thank you, Robert. Thank you.
We're going to have time to deal with that.
Thank you. That's fine.
Just a couple of quick comments. I agree with Chuck that we should not use the equity term. It kind of makes it sound like it's a noble effort.
That was what I was referencing with the day's changes.
On Atherton's part, I, you know, the detachment, I would use detachment, which I think, you know, that is, I believe, the formal language used by LAFCO. It would be a detachment process, and I think that has a better connotation to it than it is dividing something. The only other comment I had was, as we proceed today, I think we should keep in mind that this new standards of coverage report that was just released, there's some, it was a great report, I think, I think they did a great job for us. There's a lot of findings and recommendations in there that I think are very current, very topical. A lot of it overlaps what we've already done, but I think it's, it could help us form a framework for our discussion today. That's all I have.
I just have one quick question, Robert. So I hear what everyone is saying about the Atherton situation because that's definitely a departure from the original board consensus, which was kind of not to do anything. But I think we're kind of at a turning point right now here. So when we have our meeting in February at Station Three, we probably need to think about how we're going to present ourselves as a fire district and to kind of acknowledge that they've said that there's a problem and kind of give our side of it. We've been, you know, a little, we've just been listening, and I think now, I think that we owe it to the community to respond in some way.
I think, I think everyone has some valid, if I may add, kind of little two cents to this. I think we need to come away with Atherton as one message and one accord. And the only way I could think we can get there from my perspective is to really have a study session around the issues, whatever they are with Atherton. I know our meeting is coming up next week.
During our board meetings?
Our board meetings coming up. So between now and then, we need to try to figure out, it can be, we can, you know, I don't know if today is going to be able to do that today, but at least between now and then, be able to come together to talk about this. And solely as one item agenda, solely that is the issue. And we can do it before, close session before, you know, our meeting, that's permissible. But we need to do that because that's the only way we're going to get on one accord, at least one mind accord, one approach.
I think that's important.
And I think, you know, hopefully today, maybe you could spend a little bit more time, you know, on this because, you know, I think the points are all well taken. Remember, equity isn't like terminology, that's theirs.
That's right.
So if you don't want to use that terminology, then as a group, we have to say that. Director Collie's pointing to the other two directors, Director Bernstein and Solano. You know, there are things in here where we have constrained, restrained, not done things purposely.
Yes.
But we weren't going to respond. We weren't going to react. We want to get a tip for that. We would want to give them, you know, if they say it costs ten dollars, and we said, well, either we don't tell you what it costs because we don't want to do all that other work, or do we come in and say, well, it's actually eight dollars. And they say, well, you need, you owe us two dollars, right? You have that backlash too, you could have. So again, I think going to Atherton, which is a good move, is you get to hear from the residents of Atherton, maybe from all these people that are so unhappy with our service. Because I don't think I've ever heard it either. I'm sure there's somebody or two going to show up, maybe. But that's our opportunity to talk to you because you're the real board, I'm the real chief, and we run the real organization. Not one on paper that was made up, that doesn't have employees, doesn't seem to have fire trucks, and apparently can work with two stations and cover all the calls in the area that they have, which I don't believe.
So just to piggyback on that here, I just want to reiterate that you're right, that the terminology of an equity problem, which is to the tune of eight million dollars and growing every year, was a term that was used by their town manager and their liaison. So it's not just equity, it's an equity problem. I agree, maybe we should change the terminology to suit what we are trying to accomplish, but I just wanted to clarify, from you and that meeting, they said equity problem for them.
Well, I, reiterate again, because I know we've got a lot to cover.
Yeah, I'm done, but I just...
We need to, as a board, figure out when we're going to talk about that in some way.
Right, I just want, I didn't want people to think we made up, we didn't make up that term.
I understand that, but I just want to stick on, on the process today.
Yeah, I agree.
Chuck?
It's a real quick thing. Maybe between you and the chief, maybe we don't have enough time to get ready for Atherton, and maybe you might want to consider flipping these meetings or setting back the schedule one month or something. I'm just throwing the idea out.
Then you'll be behind, Atherton's going to have two public meetings.
Well, so what? If we have a public meeting, we have nothing to say, I think we have a problem.
Well, remember, if I may interject, I hear what you're saying, Chuck, but I think it's like what I've seen over the last two years. Once we start postponing, once we start deviating from the schedule, and this is a very critical issue, and I think each city, each has, or each station, as the chief began to outline here, there are critical items for each one. We may not necessarily solve all or identify everything, but I think if we plan it well enough, we will be able to discuss amongst ourselves our messaging, you know, and what are the real issues for us as a board with their comments and with their approach, as well as kind of understand a little bit more about where Atherton's problems are. I think we can do this, we're just going to have to, there's going to be a sacrifice on our part to really kind of find time. I know everybody's busy, but we're going to have to find time to cast, to carve out an hour. It may take two hours, but I think we need to carve this out before our meeting. But I wouldn't want to change the schedule based upon the fact that, okay, yeah, there's a lot of information we need to talk about. But I think if we plan it well enough, that we can, we can, we can get to the message real quick, you know, we can at least have that as an understanding amongst the board members. So that if we need another meeting to kind of finish flushing out something, because there's going to be, this is not, their announcement to the community is not going to be the last time they're going to approach the city. Because we, if you look at all of what the goals and stuff, things we have talked about, we don't have a communication strategy. And I think Rob brought it up, or somebody brought it up in the last meeting. We need to, we are, maybe that was me, you Jim, we need to formulate that in our own approach. So, but for now, we need to get the basics out there. So anyway, you may come.
Just real quickly, you know, we have done work on this topic before, so I think we have a body, I think there's a consensus. I do think it's important on the meeting on the eighteenth in Atherton that we... I would like us to make a declaration. I would like you as the president to read a statement, you know, that explicitly articulates, you know, our position that we reject this, you know, that it's not an equity issue, and just a broad outline of the damage we think that it would cause. I think it's important that we do that on the eighteenth. I would like to do that prior to the eighteenth, even if it's just an hour or two that we can, you know, we can carve out the time.
Yeah, we have to be on the same page as a board, otherwise this isn't going to work.
Right.
So maybe what we can do, and I have to pair with you, I think someone brought up before about a maybe possible resolution. I don't know if that's really in, if it's something, a resolution of some sort that declares where our position officially is.
Or we approve that at the meeting.
Could we approve?
At that station.
There's a variety of things we could do, but I think we just need to get busy on, on, firstly, finding a date, a time we can do this. Like say, if an hour, we can all devote to it, let's just devote that hour to it, and then figure out where we go from there.
Okay.
Is that, I mean...
Yep. Sounds to me.
So, so I guess, going back, we've got to find out where, and maybe before we leave here today, we can kind of say if we got an hour somewhere between now and where, I don't know.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Oh, I forgot, this is per week, right?
Yeah, so maybe Michelle should do it, do it all.
So Chief Navarro's ready to go into accreditation strategic plan, just giving updates, since again, the standards of cover was part of that. But he's, he's ready to go, and I know he also looked at some of the data on Atherton because we've been talking with the vendor about that as well, on the impacts and that other matrix report.
For one matrix report?
Correct. Yeah, the vendor looked at that.
You said the other one, like I thought...
Well, there's two recommendations, the first one and the second one, they gave it to him. Go for it, Manny.
Thank you. After President Jones, members of the board, Manuel Navarro, Division Chief, Menlo Park Fire, your accreditation manager. We'll be brief, I'm just wanting to walk you through very quickly, there are some handouts so you don't have to take a bunch of notes. I've actually ran off the PowerPoint because that way you don't have to crank your neck around. Let me talk a little bit about the work that was involved in doing this. We go back quite a ways, and actually accreditation was first talked about with the boards in 2009. It's been around for a while. When we took on the project, there's a number of things that were required to get the project on going. There was some required training as an accreditation manager, I actually had to attend classes to become proficient on what they were going to be looking at. We needed a standards of cover with three years of further data. We didn't have one that was updated at the time, so we had to go do an RFP and get that going. We also needed a community risk assessment, which was part of that study. So the RFP encompassed all that, and that work was being done within the last year, and you saw the presentation just the other day. We didn't have a strategic plan, so we put together a group to put a strategic plan, and even prior to that and following their own C P S C E recommendations, we did a squad analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And a senior group within Menlo Park Fire Department put that together. At the end of this thing, we have to put together a self-assessment manual. This is the bulk of the work that has to happen. There's 252 performance indicators that we have to write to. And each one of those, we have to have a descriptive of what we do as an organization, an appraisal of how we're doing that, any plans going forward to basically retain those or move in a different direction. They're looking for program improvement typically. At the end of that, we also have to have references. That probably was the biggest job that we had in going through this, and even the people that put together the accreditation will tell you that when you start this process, the process is not just gathering this information, it's really looking into the organization and how well we do those things. The final CPS process for evaluation accreditation, when we go before the board, or actually we get that far, we can have three results. We can become accredited, we can be deferred, they can tell us, say, there's more work you need to have in this particular category, go back and do some work. Or worst-case scenario, you can be denied. Very rarely happens if you try to, and this is the words of the individual, this director, you lie, you're not going to get accredited, you're going to be denied. They'll throw you away and you can't come back for several years. So obviously, he's told everybody in ahead of time, you put down exactly what's going on. They will not judge us typically on how well we're doing something or we're doing to a certain standard. What they'll judge us on is we have a process because if we recognize we're not doing as well as we would like to in a certain way, what are our plans to improve that? And that's really what they set forward. So here's where we are today. We've got the SOC and the CRA is completed, it's a done deal. One thing you probably have not seen, and the chief was actually alluding to it a little bit, when I wrote the RFP for the SOC, I knew we needed data. I knew we needed someone to come in and do some analytical work for us. As part of that RFP, we have Intera that came on board, and I just ran something off this morning just on Atherton alone. In 2019, because I got 2019 data through Atherton, I've got a matrix of all the calls we had, over a thousand calls in Menlo, from Menlo Park Fire Protection District into Atherton area. And it's interesting because when you see the aggregate on it, you see Station Four, you see Station Five, Stations One, Station Six, and Station Three. So we'll be able to show you that from that matrix, which you also do on that particular mapping. You can actually click on the data that's there and they give you the report of what happened at that particular incident. So we got that through Intera. The strategic plan is completed, I'm going to talk a little bit about that later on today. Subject of discussion and review in the annual meeting, part of the accreditation process is on an annual basis, we're going to take a look at our strategic plan and our documents, and we did that last week. The final part of this is category one, two, and three, I can submit for applicant status with the board. When I submit for applicant status, what they'll do is basically is assign a mentor. The mentor will take that data, review those first three categories that we have, and give us feedback on if we're on track or not on track. Go ahead and take off and start doing the rest of these. Now, I may have to do some edits to it, I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen with that. After the mentor review, the final edits will change, and we'll go through and do categories four through 10. I've already drafted all the way through 10. There's some holes I still have in that, but I went ahead to just start drafting this stuff because I was trying to play catch-up. We must be cleared by the mentor before we go... We must be cleared by the mentor before going to assignment to an evaluator team. The bottom of this, and I put this in records, it's important, given the minimum of six months in CPS's process before we can become accredited, so they will take a great deal of time to do that, that's out of my control, because once I've submitted for applicant status, we're gonna start that six-months process, and it may be even longer than that, I don't have control of it. What I do think we can do is we hit all our benchmarks, in spring of 2021, we'll be able to go and get it before the board for accreditation, and I'll explain why that works. So here's part of that process, we declare applicant status, we submit 1, 2, and 3 categories, by March 31st, I want to have those submitted. I'm on time right now to get that done, I might even be able to get it done a little bit ahead of time, quite frankly. They will sign our evaluator, that evaluator wants 45 days to take a look at all those kinds of things, and actually, the mentor, I'm not sure how long they're gonna take. So once the mentor says you can go, I can submit the rest of them, they'll have them for 45 days, we will have a site visit, and that site visit will be three to seven days, typically it's around five. When the evaluators come in for a site visit, I anticipate they're probably gonna wanna talk to a board member, and maybe some union people too, because that's all part of the accreditation process.
That's in here, that's this page, right?
Yeah, that's the timeline there. That process basically is gonna take about 45 days for them to complete all the evaluations, and basically, what we're hoping they'll do is give us a letter to the board and say, you're ready for being accredited. The hearings are only scheduled twice every year, and the problem is, if we move through this process, and we don't do it as quickly as possible, we're gonna miss that mark, because it's only twice a year. That's why I'm shooting for 2021, they gave us all of 2020 to get all this stuff done. We forcibly could get it done sooner, if they will move us through the process, but I have no control over that at all. So, you look in the bottom of that, accreditation is twice a year.
What does sooner mean?
Excuse me?
What does sooner mean?
Assuming.
No, you said you could do it sooner. What does that mean?
Well, I've got great confidence in what I've done, and I'm thinking they're gonna look at this and say, God, this is great, Manny, we're gonna just move you on on through. I don't know if that's gonna work or not. Yeah, because we'll have stuff done, quite frankly, once it's submitted, but once it gets in their hands, it's out of my control on how long they're gonna take. When they tell me it takes 45 days just to do the retraining, and then come here for a week, and they take another 45 days, you know, assuming all that, I don't understand why it takes as long as it does. The evaluators have done this time and time again, so it's not like they're looking at it the first time, so we'll see. Anyway, this is the strategic plan, and I've got the strategic goals in front of you, so you don't have to look at it. I thought it was germane for the discussion that we're having today. A great deal of work is going into this, the nine strategic goals basically came out of a senior leadership group, looking at not only the squad analysis that we got from the members, but we listened to the board, we listened to issues that were before the board, we listened to the fire chief, listened to the things that are going on for us, strategically looking forward, and I always preface it in this way, I used to tell my staff time and time again, we have two things we needed to do, we need to prepare for emergencies every day, and every day means checking the rigs, doing your training, doing all the things that you have to do to be able to make sure that you can perform in emergency, that's just daily stuff that you do. The second caveat is what do we do to make a safer community? And I used to challenge the staff on a regular basis, what are we doing looking forward to make it safer? We're better off if we don't have to go to a fire, we can prevent the fire, we're better off if we don't have to go to an accident, if we can prevent that accident from happening, which is the at-risk groups and what have you. So there's kind of like two buckets, the one is a little more strategic, because it's more far-fetched, it's more future-oriented, so that's really, when you take a look at what we're doing strategically, you're not gonna see the things that we do every day. The chief got last week reports from 23 programs, 23 programs that do everyday kind of stuff, and what we have is a one-pager from each one of those, which I put in the accreditation process, describes the program, and talks about what their goals and objectives are for that given year, and what they did for the particular year. So, for example, we got self-contained breathing apparatus, that stuff has to be inventoried, maintained, inspected, tested on a regular basis, that's just stuff we have to do to prepare for every day. But what do we do for future kind of stuff, and that's what the strategic plan is about. What I put it in here is, we got nine strategic goals, that's the overarching thing, and I think that's probably an area where the board can take a look at and say, hey, we're on track here, can we add this, can we think about that? A strategic plan is a living document, and we certainly can modify that any way possible and coincide it with what it is here in our plan. We have 40 supporting objectives under each one of those strategic goals, so 40 out of the nine that are there, there's about 180-plus deliverables, that's the actual task to get to that, and that's really, really down in the detail, that's where the rubber meets the road, but on the higher end of this thing, when we're talking about the nine strategic goals, that's what you have in front of you, and I think that's good for discussion for the board, especially what you're doing right now. Any questions?
Any questions remaining?
Sure.
Chief, do we publish the program reports? I think you said there were 23.
I've got the program reports, I can publish them if you'd like, or you'd like a copy of those, if you can see those.
I'd be interested.
Sure.
It's all part of the process, so I mean, there's nothing, then again, we've had to get to that, so that's fine.
You know, I'm familiar with some of them, I'm not familiar with 23, so it would be of value to me to see.
Yeah, what has occurred, and there's lots of management process that has gone in this last year and a half, two years, we have program coordinators and managers, and there's a division level over the top of that, so each one of those programs has individuals that are identified to do that particular work, so that's where it lies, and, you know, the drone UAS program has a program coordinator and a manager, SCBA's tools and equipment, there's a whole list of those, and I can give those to you at all, but what happens with that is that there's a process, we have a weekly meeting with the deputy chief and senior staff, anything that happens within those programs is subject for discussion at that meeting, and again, that's part of process for accreditation, so we have to make some tweaks or changes in that, we can do that. There's also a change process within the organization, any member that is looking at policy, procedure, or tools or equipment, that would like to see some change, they have to basically develop a written memo for that, for that senior leadership team. What we do on a regular basis on the leadership team is we sit down, we take a look at that, and we're all pining on, does this need more work, does it have to go here, does it have to go there, we can make a decision on whether that should be enacted or not. We will put out two documents, one is an informational memorandum, which is just kind of a thing that we're gonna be looking at and changes its information out there, or an OM, operational memorandum, which actually becomes policy at the end of the year, and that's one of the things that Chief Schaefer has, he puts that in rather than policy, so there's lots of process behind that.
You know, just one other thing, there's 200 and some elements to this.
252.
252.
Eighty-six of them core.
Does the accrediting agency, do they, have they created any kind of tracking software program so that, you know, as we go into the maintenance mode, that there's some ready process to monitor and evaluate?
You know, to a large extent, it's still in its infancy, it started in the late 80s, and I can allude to what happens on the law enforcement side, law enforcement's been ahead of us for a long period of time, for a long period of time, we didn't have any, when we started to see recessions, and I've been in my career through three recessions already, it was really noted that something had to be done on the fire side of it for process and analysis and data, and they started the accreditation process, really, it started from scratch, it's a nonprofit that's out there now, and it's been, I think this is a third or fourth generation, because they're gonna do some new processes out, should be in 2020, but it'll be enacted in 2021, but literally, we don't have that kind of database, we have to develop our own, so we'll have to do a tracker own. What the chief will have to do is have an accreditation manager working on it on a regular basis, to gather all the reports, because we have to do a summary report every year going forward, once we're accredited, because in five years, you're up for reaccreditation, and that aggregate of everything you've done in those five years is gonna be part of that reaccreditation, so.
Rob?
I'm just listening.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great, I love it. I like your nine strategic goals and plans, I remember when we first started this process, we had given samples of the poverty control, Justice Department, where that the staff and organizational and chief staff prepares a strategic plan, and it's the way to do it, and we're on our way, I mean, with the accreditation progress that the chief authorized you to go through, and of course, the standards of coverage report, that'll kind of an inspection tool for us to look at our organization from the outside looking in, is also helpful, but with your nine goals, I can go through stuff, and these are pretty much affective goals that you've identified, but anything can fit into these relative to what the operation is, and what our purpose of our fire district is, can fit into each one of these, and that's what I like about it, that it can be a living, breathing document.
One of the categories is specifically on planning, and it speaks directly to that, if we didn't have a strategic plan, and we didn't have process in place, we'd be in trouble in trying to follow it, and so, it's coming together, I mean.
Oh, it really is. Chief, do we have any news still?
So we're just finishing the one for this year.
Okay, can we be sure that we have this at our Atherton meeting?
You're gonna have it, the draft is out, the new one, the new one should be done by the, it's supposed to be done by today, but we couldn't pull it off.
This is a two-page review that we have for the district, it's great, tells us pretty much everything, even the outside deployments that we do with Task Force 3, so.
To the queue, it'll be done.
Great, thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to ask the chief, if there's anything we can do to get this in faster, it seems to me waiting another year and a half just seems like such a long time.
Well, we don't wanna do that, but, you know, I'll speak to that in a minute, though, kind of the progression going on.
Yeah, let me just, it's not waiting a year and a half, this actually, for the last year and a half, has been in process, and we've been improving ourselves as we go along, and one of the things the individual from CPS has said, is that a lot of people have found the validity of the accreditation, not in getting accreditation, it's the journey, and it's taken a hard look at what you've done and how you do that, many things we've done well for a long period of time, but we never really tracked it or documented or looked at it closely, or put it into a process, you know, so that anybody who is a manager can say, here's a linear process of management, and how you get from here to get to there, well, we've been getting there, we just go around and do different things. I've been aggregating a lot of that, it's kind of interesting, for example, we were tasked with taking a look at some of our programs like SCBA, I couldn't find a documentation on our program for SCBA, I've strung it around, I took a picture of the guy that was taking care of our stuff, because we contracted him, but then I tracked down the contracts, tracked down, there is a process there, we've had that in place for a long period of time, we just haven't stuck it in a management bucket, so, that's the 23 programs that you'll see, and even that, it's just a one-pager, but at least it's got us that direction, so I think we're way further now than we were a year and a half or two years ago.
And SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus, those air tanks that we use in burn buildings, through the port of stuff.
The question I got is, is there a separate accreditation process for, like, medical services or ambulance services?
For ambulances, there are, for medical services, licensing for paramedics.
But there's nothing like this process here.
Not to my knowledge, it's part and parcel to what we do, it's part of accreditation for at least the advanced life support component, but slightly different, I think, than what you're referring to.
If I may, it could be one of the things, Chuck, I don't know how, assuming it's important in order to.
Mercy medical service is part of what we do, so we measure, right? That's what we do.
Right, so, it seemed like, if I'm correct when I'm wrong, that as a board, I think our, you know, our responsibility is to kind of look at overall from a bird's eye view, and develop policies around, if that's important to the board, to make sure that there's ongoing training, and there's ongoing around that area, the board has to create a policy, or our own policy, I would think, around what we want to see happen within the district, and I think it boils down to staff, or the chief, and chief Navarro, to come up with their own strategy how that's gonna work, you know, and I think that's where, throughout the day, that's pretty much what we need to kind of focus on, from that bird's eye view, what is missing in our policy as a board, for that long-term view that we need put into place, because once it gets down to a strategic goal for staff, I think that's where it's good for staff, and it gives us, I think, as a board, an idea of what staff is working on, and it keeps us in this area of where we're policymaking, entity, rather than moving into the actual day-to-day operation, because to me, this is a day-to-day operation, I could be wrong, but let somebody help me here, I'm missing both.
Hi.
Okay, so I assume that in some parts, the board needs to kind of look at this and say, what policy do we have in place right now, that's taking that bird's eye view around this, that that's what we are concerned about, and figure out if we have reports about what's going on, or even our goals in that area, et cetera.
So, you know, one of the things I think for the board is, and I wrote it last night to you in an email, you know, again, just because accreditation is my number-one priority, it needs to be a priority of the fire board too, so I don't want to just assume that we're on the path and we want to just keep doing that, right? We need to reaffirm that, because a lot of work and time has been spent, you know, Chief Navarro is about ready to launch, Director McGlaughlin asked me a very good question, which was, when Chief Navarro and myself are gone, you know, because there's an annual reporting that has to be done, but there's a five-year redo, who's doing that?
He's doing that, yeah.
So, I mean, you know, and there's been discussion about how the board would like to have, or at least some of the board would have, like to have greater analytics, information, reporting that can be done, which is technically an analyst, and we don't have an analyst position currently in staff, so as we get to these, if in fact accreditation is still a priority for the board as well, and it's important, then, you know, setting it up to be successful going forward is something the board can spend some time working on and ensuring that occurs, because right now, once we're gone, you know, I can't tell you that it'll be how it exactly should work, but maybe we should figure out how it should work, and Manny's right, part of this has been the journey, because we've done a lot of things, even with how we do staff meetings and so forth, that in the past, we did it a certain way, we've kind of started to readjust and make it fit into accreditation, not that what we were doing was wrong, but it fits into part of a process, so, you know, many things are more streamlined, formalized, documented than they were before, because that's what this process does for you, and we're.
You know, I was involved in the accreditation process with another organization, and I couldn't agree more that it was the process that had the real value, it's 252 items, you know, many of them are doing very well, although it's either it's not, they're not recorded properly or documented properly, and a lot of it gets lost, and some things, we discovered we weren't doing very well, that you assume certain things were being done, and they weren't, so, and maybe now is a good time, I know this is still, you know, a top priority with me, and I don't want to take just a straw poll among the board now to reassess that, I think this will have, this will pay dividends for many years, and I think, we talked about this yesterday, accreditation is not a trophy, it's not a prize, it is, it's a process for self-improvement as an organization, you know, it gives you benchmarks to measure yourself against, your progress against, and over time, you know, the goal or the ideal is that it makes you a better organization, so, I for one, you know, still attach a very high priority to it. I want to word this in a way that doesn't sound negative, because I don't mean it negatively, but in looking at the goals, I think we need to find.
But in looking at the goals, I think we need to find a way to link the goals to the quality of the service we offer. Because if I were to go out to the public and I'm saying, "Look what we're doing for you," I don't think there's one of these that somebody would grab onto and say, "Oh, I'm so happy." I mean, they're interested in how fast we can get there, how well, you know, how well we do this, how we treat other people, how understanding we were. I mean, there's just things that are part of the service that this doesn't quite reflect. And so I'm not, it is important, I think we should, if there's a professionalism about it, I think we should push it. But I also don't think that it really encapsulates the quality of the service that we're offering.
Can I just speak to that? You're absolutely correct because the objectives are where that meat and potatoes are. In other words, the way these are written, they're overarching, they feel good. You know, I was caucusing in Iowa, this would be great to say these things, you know, but what the hell does it mean? The reality is underneath that, and that's where we had a lot of the heavy lifting with the senior members, is, well, if we're going to get to this, what are the benches to get to that? What are the specific objectives to get to that? And those are more distinct and more articulate. And under that are deliverables, the actual work that gets done. So you just didn't see that part of the document.
Could you get us a copy of that sometime?
Sure. Actually, the strategic plan, the goals themselves and the objectives will be on the internet. The deliverables, we're not going to put in there because they come and go in there, a lot of, but the rest of them are there also, yeah.
So where we go from here with this process, there's a comment around affirming, affirming that the standards of coverage is still something the board is interested in, still wants to pursue.
Strategic plan or standards of coverage?
Standards of coverage, that's what I thought I heard.
The accreditation process.
Accreditation process, to make sure that we are still on board with that particular, for the staff to continue along that line. I think five years from now, it goes real quick. You know, and I think there's a couple of things that got brought up around that in terms of having some type of mechanism, in this case, staff is placed that they kind of see a lot of these things, you know, keep their hands and pulse of a lot of what's in this report so that it doesn't fall through cracks. And how that information gets back to the board, you know, it can come through various venues so that, you know, stay on track of that certain things are happening, certain things are not happening. But someone has to do that, and I think that's where, it seemed like we will, at some point, through this budgetary process we're going through right now, is to make a hard decision about making way for a position around that, to find someone, whoever you call it, to make sure that you bring that person on board. So as soon as you see, as soon as we go online, get the okay that we have someone on board who's willing to take this and run with it and track it over the next five years. And we have to develop a mechanism, what kind of information do we really want, you know, to see it before? Once things happen, what do we, how often? And what type of information? So that we can make sure from the bird's eye view that, hey, everything is going okay. If it's not going okay, you know, how can we respond?
Yeah, I think that's a segue reason to what else I wanted to say here real quickly. So, you know, again, March is when, you know, we'll go ahead, Chief Navarro, hopefully, will be ready and won't do the submittal. But equally on your calendar for this year, don't forget in April, we're going to get the space needs assessment. So it's another big report that's going to come regarding facilities. April's also the month in which you hopefully will renew the Stanford Linear Accelerators Contract, which has requirements in it for us to do work with SLAC, of which they pay us for as well, though. So it's another item that's coming up, a big one. And then something you probably don't know is, you know, equal to accreditation in my mind is what FEMA does every three years. They come in here with our Federal Response Team. And they conduct, they bring in a tighter team to conduct administrative readiness evaluation on the urban search and rescue team. So we've been through those a number of times, but those are big, top-shelf items for the program, for the district, because those are things that we support up until the day when they walk in. I mean, meaning, we know what they're going to ask us, and we need to be ready for that. So it's everything from our records to our equipment, where they randomly pull out items to make sure you have them, they're done to their satisfaction, they meet the federal requirement. So, you know, there's a lot of checks and balances and other things going on this year. I just give you that because, again, totality of circumstance, it's all time, it's all other things that we're doing. I mean, you know, I think what Chief Navarro's presentation really shows is how much work is going on behind the scenes, meaning, people are already working doing stuff. And that's not going to be the emergent 24/7/365 part of our job. We can't predict when the calls are coming in, but you can see by the data that you were given, and Manny just tabulated it for this year. I mean, we're already much busier this year than we were last year in a number of calls. I think we're...
Almost eight percent.
Yeah.
How much is that?
I just ran 219 data, we're almost at eight percent more, nine thousand plus.
Within the first month of the year?
No, 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 no.
Or the last?
219, this year, I think...
Oh, you mean 219 year-over-year? Which is 20, I'm sorry, okay.
We went down just a bit for some reason in 218. Hard to understand because, look, the CRA report consistently, we've been up over the last 10 years, several percent every year. And this last year, we're at over seven.
On calls, right?
On calls.
Yeah, because that shows in the standards of cover, too.
It shows it up to 18. So what we're doing is we've asked the vendor to go back and do 19 because that's when truck two went into the service and we moved the rescue.
But I think that was part of it already. Didn't he account for truck two?
No, there wasn't truck two.
I thought that he, I thought, okay, I misheard.
So he has no data for that? And yeah, you could go into a long thing on data and information where we're at, Public Safety Communications and their new capabilities. But, you know, we're getting systems that will be better. And the other part of that, too, is if you look at the recommendations out of the SOC, one of the ones, and this is a good topic when you go down into Bellhaven, is they had suggested moving Rescue 77...
Yeah, to six.
From 77 to two. But if you listen to the vendor's presentation, what we showed him, especially because John put together all the development projects that are going on in M2 and Bellhaven, and it's huge. That doesn't even count East Palo Alto. So remember, part of the discussion at some point needs to be, do you add more personnel and come up with a Rescue Six? Because we don't think the staff, which will be in there on the 18th that we're talking about, we don't think moving that rig is the right idea in advance of all the development that's going on. Plus, we spent years trying to get to an effective force, so...
On top of that? Because, so I thought that in his presentation, you know... Thank y'all. That 2018 was an anomaly, that it kind of dropped off.
Slightly, yeah.
Yeah, so do you think that magnifies the number for 2019 more than it would normally?
No, I don't know why 2018 went down.
He didn't either, that's, yeah.
We, nobody knows. I mean, so we'll see what's going to happen for this year, but, you know, we're tracking the calls. And the big thing is, we're busier, there is more call volume and so forth that you can see. I mean, but doing the trend analysis, yeah, we were right where we thought we would be this last year, which was about 9,300 calls. So it was growing from, let's say, 2016 was 9,000 calls. So the trend was going up. And I think they had, it's what, in five years or 10 years, we're up to over 10, no, almost 12,000.
They track this with other districts of our size. We're tracking right with...
Yeah, that I did see.
But a lot of that has to do with the change of our shore resources, the AMAS calls, a lot of the stuff that we do. I'll tell you, this will count especially for traffic accidents.
For which local?
Hundreds of those, thousands of them.
Oh, okay.
So can you...
Thank you. No, I'm done, thanks.
So can we, it's about one quarter right now.
We're done with our part.
So the chief report turns goals and priorities, went through that. The grand jury recommendations, the...
We didn't go through, we just touched on it. That it's there.
It's there, right. And then, so now, I think we're moving into the part where I think the board were input, looking at all of the, not only the priorities that we put together over the last two years, but taking into consideration the information that we have heard from Chief Navarro and also the chief's goal. The process now is to, are there any other goals that the board, any board members may have, that we want to put out and put on the board so that we can begin to, at our next phase, with the consultants, to kind of turn this, all these ingredients into some type of meal that we can grab up to. Because remember, all of this, some of these things really do need the policy behind. And we have to begin to talk about and look at what some of these things may be. Hopefully, we can get to that point. What I do know is that, and I've seen, that we do have 16 areas that pockets of information, goals have flowed into. So because it's important for the committees to do their work, and they need to understand what that work, some of that work, looked like. And so now is the time to, if it falls in the name of team errors, that we need to kind of throw it out there and put it on the table and sell it back there, ready to record all this stuff so we can kind of have some idea where they belong. Did you have any, Hannah?
I think we should take, have a good discussion of the standards of cover study because there were some very provocative conclusions in there that I think we need to understand more. And I'll throw out a couple of them. One was the public safety communication time being about 50% more than what is the norm, our norm, our goal, and 50% more than is normal in other things. That's terrible. And here we are, I mean, I saw some stuff here. I don't know the status of all these contracts. It's really hard to keep track of all the different contracts that we have. But in one of the chief's documents, it mentions something about the contract is still under negotiation and so forth.
Wait, are you talking about the dispatch community?
The dispatch, yeah.
Not, not our, that's centralized for the community, right? That's not specific, only to us.
Well, I don't, it's only, the data only related to us. So I don't know how well they're doing dispatching other people's stuff. But in terms of our dispatch, it was taken 90 seconds rather than 60 seconds. So that was one area. A second area, which is really, really provocative, was suggesting that our nighttime response, even though daytime has terrible traffic, our nighttime response really suffered, and it was mostly internal. And it was suggesting, and again, this is one of those things you're not supposed to say in public, but I think it's, that the fact that the firefighters are sleeping is a problem in terms of response time. And maybe we need to look at different shifts where we don't have sleeping firefighters.
So I'm getting lost here.
No, I'm going to finish what I'm saying.
I'm kind of, help me understand, is this a goal that you want to try to bring out? Stated as such? Because it would sound like you're getting into statements and stuff like that. And that's okay, but I don't think...
Well, I'm trying to help explain why it is. Okay, so I think that dispatch time is an issue we should be looking at. And improving that, that to me is a goal. I think our response time in terms of the firefighters getting out of the station is a goal we should be looking at. And it means having some very uncomfortable discussions that people don't want to have, but I think we should be doing that. There are other kinds of things about, we're right at that threshold of not really meeting our response times. It was suggesting that we need a better response time for medical services particularly, or a different kind of response. It wasn't exactly clear what that should be. But, so I think this idea of maybe differentiating our response, you know, the goal of differentiating a fire response from a medical response needs to be studied. So those are things that came out of standards of study. I think there's probably two or three more.
But how much of that is really at the board level? And how much is at staff level?
Well, I think the board's the one that decides. I think the board's the one that decides whether these are important issues or not. Is it important at the board level that we meet our response times? I hope so.
We're within our policies that the board states that.
We're not at the level that where people will survive a medical call. So getting there in seven minutes means, if we looked at the chart that was on there, 25% of the people are dead or something. I mean, sorry, that's what the chart showed, that the effectiveness goes way down at seven minutes. So if that's how long it's taken us to get to medical calls, we're failing. People are dying because of it.
And as a board member, how, I mean, what do we do as board members to change that?
Well, are you asking what I would do or are you asking what you would do?
No, I ask you as a board member. Now, I'm not talking about me, I'm saying as a single, I'm talking about as a board. Because, yeah, as a board, what do we need to do to make a difference in that?
Well, I'd like to hear some recommendations from the staff of what we could do. But I think one of the things is perhaps we could look at our vehicles. We've already talked about, I mean, some sort of narrow, narrow wheel-based vehicle that could get through traffic and get to medical calls. And the optimal time is about three minutes. And seven minutes would get too long.
So that then leads into, in terms, just take that vehicle for example, that leads into more of an area of where we want to go in the future, we're looking at various apparatus, equipments, cars, trucks, that will allow that quicker response time, which is a policy as far as, where I haven't seen that yet for a board to, somewhere to have, something that's said, one of the things that the board is interested in is looking at future, begin to look at future equipment that will allow us to respond quicker. I haven't seen that anywhere within, in what the board has taken a position on. And I think that needs to be first before we start going into operations and saying, you need to do this, you need to do that.
You just asked if there was any things we wanted to add to a board consideration of goals. And I'm suggesting there are things that came out of the standards of cover that I would like to add to discussions. I don't know what else has come up.
So Robert, just to, so I'm understanding. I'm trying to connect with what y'all are both saying. And so it looks like the whole apparatus, et cetera, that whole thing. We, last month, said it would go into strategic planning. Is that what you're talking about? I don't, I'm a little confused, Chuck, because I don't, I didn't interpret the data in the same way you did. So I'm trying to figure out how that would fit as a goal versus how we're, and how we should maybe stay out of the operations part, which is what I think you're saying.
I'm not interpreting data, that was simply...
No, that's interpretation. That's your interpretation.
Well, I read English, and that's what it said in plain English. So, I mean, you may have a different interpretation.
Yeah, so it's not plain English. I mean, that's my point, it's subject to interpretation.
So I think, Chuck, if it's a goal, then we need to throw it out. I think you mentioned two or three, you said there were goals in there that we capture those goals and we figure out where, within the three themes, six themes that we have, where it goes likely. And then from there, who's ever over those, who's head of those or in those particular theme areas, then get to prioritize what's important because everything can be worked on at once. So that's where the prioritization has to come into play.
Yeah, I think I, tell me if I'm wrong, but if we're looking at what Manny has set up, which is strategic planning goals and objectives...
You mean the nine?
Right, the nine. That would actually fall into number one, what you're talking about, response times? Because it is involving the public safety of individuals. Oh, I'm... Versus non-strategic goals? What Chuck has raised, it would fall into number one. But it's a, it's something that, I know myself not being a firefighter, do they sleep with their turnouts on so they can run down the... I mean, I don't know what the solution would be from that time period where they're asleep relative to when they have to get on the truck and respond. Is there a gap between, since we don't control dispatch, right, Chief? That we don't control dispatch, there's that when they get the call, trying to filter the call relative to, you know, open the door so we don't have to chop it down and, you know, all the stuff that... to chop it down, and, you know, all the stuff that, that is told to the individual that's making the call, and, well, is, how much time is being used relative to that? And, you know, being woken up is, I, I know myself, it's, it's an issue for myself to be woken up and, you know, lights on and everything else, and trying to find everything. So, but, the way, that's why I was happy with the way Manny had, had presented this, is that that would fall basically in our first item, which would be the safety.
The support and provide community education programs?
It says, says impact to life and property from the effects mandated in natural emergency.
I'm looking at the wrong sheet, sorry.
We're getting into the integrating thing right now, and I think if, if I hear what Rob is saying, that all of this needs to be thrown in there, and, as part of something we will assess to see where it goes, because I think there's only one, there's one of the things that has to do with emergency, emergency prep, I think it is, or, I don't remember.
That would be number one.
That, for example, all of this can be thrown into there as possible goals in that, in that theme area. And then we meet at our next meeting, the consultant will see that, hey, these are, here's, here's, here's lineup goes into the theme one, here's lineup in theme two, and etc. And then as a board, because we are hopefully now is, is thinking in terms of where should it go? What is it, and where, where should it go? So then we can have facilitation by consulting to figure out our priorities at that point in time. Because at some point, we have to get to that point of seeing what needs to be worked on right now, because everything this year can be worked on. This may be a three-year, four-year, or five-year plan for us in terms of trying to achieve these goals. But we got to get them all out there, and Chuck brought up three, so that goes in, goes in the pot for, for us to look at, at our next meeting. And Chuck, and Rob, you brought up this nine, that this needs to be chucked in there too. We keep chucking this stuff into, I won't say the fire, but we keep chugging in there, we'll have everybody's goals at that point, or what they think.
So specifically what I was trying, trying to say, I'm looking at one, two, four, there's a lot of these that can be integrated with the aspect of just response time. And the reason why, community education programs, you know, maybe people need to know that when you call the fire department, you need to open the front door, so they don't have to chop it down. You know, small things, small things like that, you know, I.
We got to kick them out real.
Or, you know, I mean, maybe they want to chop the door, I don't know. And with the, with the key, what's that thing that?
Lockbox.
Lockbox, you know, do you have a lockbox? Education, you know, should, should you, if you have a business, should you have a lock? Yeah, you should, so, yeah, small things like that. But you're looking at a whole bunch of items that have to be integrated in a operational process.
Response.
So that's why I like the way Manny had put these nine strategic goals in. So I'll be quiet.
So, no, if I hear correctly, this gets chucked into the woodpile too, right?
Exactly. Put that in the.
Excuse me, over the last couple of years, we've, we've put a lot in that basket of the goals and, and objectives and whatnot, and I think part of our charge here is, is to try to refine that, prioritize it, make it more current. Now, I go back to my earlier comments about the SOC. As Chuck has expressed, I, I have, there are three things that really stood out, there were several things that stood out for me in this SOC report. You know, three in particular, improve the efficiency of response to emergency medical incidents, review dispatch processes to reduce call processing time, reduce the turnout time interval. Those are all, those recommendations are all based on findings that I think need further examination. I, I'm interested to hear from the chief, are there, are these findings sound? Are these recommendations sound? If, if they are, I think it clearly indicates a, a need to address these and establish goals, and I think, I think it goes to the heart of, of our, of our purpose as a, as a governing board, to establish an overriding goal of providing the highest level of service to the public that, that we can. I would never presume to tell the chief how, how to do that. You know, and I, and again, I want to hear from him, is, is this a flawed analysis by the consultant? Are there factors that weren't taken into account? You know, are, are these relevant to us? Does this indicate a need for, for change, improvement internally? And if it does, what, what's the, you know, then what's the approach? Again, I, I would never presume to tell the chief, you know, how to achieve those results, but I, I do want to hear, you know, if there is a, if there is a problem there, and then some recommendations on how we improve these.
Which of the three that you mentioned?
Recommendations, I, J, K. I'm reading from the.
Recommendations.
Standards of cover.
Yeah, and I believe it's the exact, the exact summary.
On page eight.
The executive summary, thank you.
So, you know, directors, I don't know if you remember, but early on I said, because there's a lot we're, we're going through, but that we as staff would come back at the next meeting with the SOC items from the recommendations, because we haven't had a chance to, we haven't, so remember in process, the SOC was done by the vendor, the vendor did collaborate at times with us, we gave them information, but we didn't influence their recommendations, and we didn't influence what they wrote, that's an independent third-party analysis. To what Director Laufman just said, that is the appropriate approach, because in the end, while I don't take any dispute with some of the questions, we have to ask those questions. I'm going to just give you a taste of how that works. Sometimes you can have a reaction when you hear something and say, well, there's a problem, right? Okay, that's a big statement, there's a problem.
Right.
If we dive down into it, which is what we will do, it's kind of like the inspection program, remember I told you we had a problem? Okay, we knew it, it took us a while to get there, and have like a model program. I used to say, how come we're not doing this? Well, then one of my captains said, well, wait a minute. So I'm doing that, why are you picking on me and making these statements that we're not doing that? So you have to go to seven stations times three shifts, find out where it's not happening, and then find out why it's not happening. So if we're not meeting response times, I'm pretty sure it's not all, everybody doing it, it could be one station, two, three stations, and then why? We still push buttons. We're moving to ABL, Advanced Vehicle Location, means that in the next six months, right, we're gonna, we're gonna know when the tire, yeah, we're gonna know when the tire moves on the fire truck. So even if the captain's already in the rig, on the radio, and they're, you know, halfway down the street, and then pushes the button, that could be your answer for why these calls seem delayed. Could be they got up and somebody had to go to the bathroom. I'm not going to deny that happens either, right? So, which is individual then to performance. So performance broad-based, to make broad-based statements, sometimes you have to be careful, because we're talking about again, seven stations, ten pieces of equipment, three different shifts. So it's thirty different people, or thirty different units, every, you know, every, every, well, every three shifts, right? So I mean, that's where we need to go do our new diligence as well. Public Safety Communications, Dan Delville's aware of this report now, and was thought, was stunned by that, because they think they're meeting their call times. So it just, is it just Memorial Park Fire District? What are their analytics? I'm not saying the vendor's wrong, the vendor wrote a report, independent report, we haven't even had a chance to really look at it, and, and say, this is what we see. Now, to the process here today, that's why you do those reports, right? So you end up with, what are the priorities? And I would say to you, call handling, response times, those are big deals. Those are a big deal to us, because that's bread and butter.
That's our service.
So, so. I'm getting back to Jim again, I, I'm trying to capture the three that you talked about, so I can make sure that we, we get included for next time.
Just go right by the recommendation letter.
Here's, oh, I, J, and K?
Oh, I, J.
On page four of the exec summary.
On page one, we take. Yeah, if I, I can't, because I mean, I'm probably more integrated into this than the average bear. Your voice is fine, you can hit, we exceed our turnout time. It's only by a few seconds, but still, we exceed, and maybe they're going to report what they reported. A couple of issues to that. What is, if you go to our sister, our company's next to us, Palo Alto, we kicked their ass, excuse me for my French. Our people are actually doing a really good job, we just didn't have the aggregate data that we could really do that. With the terror group that I'm working with right now, we've got the aggregate data, and what you'll see is when we look at those turnout times, you see how well we're performing, but you see some outliers out there. And to your point, that's where we got to focus, is if there's an outlier in there, why is there an outlier? Could it be just, basically, in some cases, it could be a matter of pushing our own button, because we have MDTs and other issues that go along with that. So we're, we're digging into that now, the program that we're looking at right now actually will reside on Battalion Chief's desk, they'll have every day, every minute, every second, as that stuff comes up to the new systems, they'll be able to visualize that, and then we'll get quarterly reports to our division chiefs, and annual reports to the chief. So we aren't, aren't basically tracking it, because it is called out in accreditation specifically.
Are they, yeah, Rob, Chuck?
Manny, I know in my other world, that when they would have you announce arrival, and if you're chasing a robber, I mean, push the buttons, maybe you're not going to push the button or announce arrival, because you want to actually get to the structured fire, do you have any idea how many of those happen? And I'm sure they happen a lot, I mean, you know, trying to.
I, I was looking at the data, because I looked at it from that standpoint, and I actually, I got some dropdown screens, so we couldn't get all three shifts. And I told the consultant, I said, I got, you know, I, I want to know all three shifts, that unit, station one, engine one, A, B, and C, so we can take all across the board, to see if there's some outliers. The programs we had before with firehouse were really difficult to read through, I mean, you had to go through the sheets of paper to get to it. Now we're going to have it basically on a, on a, on a dashboard on a regular basis. But I'll tell you, I, I've been at this point a long, long time, our people really are, are really hustling. I'm pretty proud of what we're doing out there.
Safety.
You know, I mean, these, these guys are getting out and moving around there, because we see across the, the country, there's a problem with the turnout time.
ABL solves what you're talking about too, because it goes to the location, and so right now, ABL will show you when you arrive on scene. So that new way that.
That's got to be a tremendous factor in a lot of the stuff, and then.
Right, because it's not manual anymore.
Yeah, is there a way, like, whoever the truck cap, I don't know, whoever, like the battalion chief or truck captain gets on the scene, can he, like, adjust or make sure that the arrival times are accurate, other than, you know.
So radio traffic.
No, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I understand, because the, so what, well, I'll have to do it once in a while, because, you know, it's not, it's not unusual, they get to a call, like you're saying, and they, they're getting out of the rig, no, they forget to push the button, right? So then there's no on scene, but they're also doing size-ups. So on a size-up, it's over the radio, so dispatch can many times just tell you, here's when they called in the radio, and they're saying, we're on scene, here's what we're doing, like, you know.
You would do the road to the fire.
Well, you know, it's part of our coordination, but you can go to the, the time that the radio communication occurred, and figure out what your arrival time was to.
Thank you, that's all, just that.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, on page ninety-six of the report, I'm dealing with medical services, page ninety-six, there's a chart that talks about cardiac arrest data, and the time it takes to get a defibrillator to the patient. And if you can do it within a, just a minute and a half, or a minute, ninety-five percent of people survive. If, if it takes us the full seven minutes, according to this, only six percent survive. That means ninety percent die between one minute and seven minutes. I think it is worth looking at response times and seeing, we had a proposal here a couple of years ago, and, you know, for looking at like this motorcycle idea where a paramedic gets there really quickly through traffic, and so forth, and I know Don Long was supposed to look into it, and he basically came back and said, oh, the firefighters don't like it. But I'm sitting here saying, what about the, what about the cardiac patient? I think that person might like it, and maybe we ought to take a look at doing some of this. That's, that's where I see a goal.
So what's the goal then? Then you say, you say you see.
Improving response time, the goal, the goal.
Please do.
Improve response time for medical services.
Michelle, you got that, no? Okay, so it's going to be on.
Okay.
All right, there you go. Anything else?
I have a few, are we now going through the stuff there?
Before you get too far in the weeds, I've done this for a long, pretty time, and I've had to deal with a large EMS system, actually, I chaired an EMS system for a time at Cali-McCarroll, is that, chasing that, that particular time element on that particular graphic, you've got people in ERs that die, heart attack, and they're seconds away. So what we look at is more globally, not just response time, I would just suggest to think about setting that as a benchmark for improvement cardiac mobility, and that could be CPR, it could be defibrillators, it could be a whole bunch of other stuff besides just response time. Because, because to chase that response time metric, means our model resources that have to be out there, distributed in that community to be able to do that. And so if you take a more global approach to that, and then set a benchmark for mobility, Seattle's done some of that work, they do a ton of CPR training out there, and Detroit to impact that particular at-risk group, even looking at the at-risk group, how much you actually have there. So I'd say it's the same goal, but it's broader, instead of saying specifically doing one particular issue. Just my, my sage advice from an old guy who's too old now.
So this is directly, Chuck, I mean, if what Chief Navarro said makes sense, or do you still, I mean, in terms of adding the piece that he talked about, rather than one particular aspect of it, but more of a little bit globally, would that satisfy, would that improve the goal that you're talking about, or get at what you're.
I think we should look at it globally, and I think we should look at it specifically. I know, for example, that we can deliver a defibrillator via a, a drum.
That's right.
And so, things may have changed, I'm not, but things have, technology has changed.
That's exactly the case, because the goal of that is how quickly we can get something there, maybe technology can do it for us.
Now, isn't that a broader, that's a broader policy thing, I think we, we need to look at as a board, in terms of, of what do we invest in? And that's a bigger, bigger picture look.
It's a subsection.
A subsection of it, but it's a bigger picture, where I think the, it makes sense to the board to look at and seek answers for, to get at the target thing that you're talking about, or improving that. Rob?
This just involves us as a board. Would I have input? Okay, I think we need to establish a communications committee, the way we have finance, the way we have emergency prep, to oversee the entire public information function, and establish a procedure to review, evaluate, and present items of interest that involve the district. As all others will report to the entire fire board, with their findings for approval of the entire fire board and fire board president. And the reason why, as to situations like, you know, like there was a house fire here that they just responded to, well, those are things that the chief and his staff can put out. But long-range projects, I think should go through the board president and vice president, and then brought to this committee for review, to see how we're good at handling them.
So, so if I hear correctly, you're saying one of the goals would be like, on this list is communications committee?
I think there should be a communications committee, as there is emergency prep, finance, and those types of things. Things that involve policy, yes. I think things that involve day-to-day operation of the fire district, like our fire, our division chief, AKA fire marshal's going to go out and do weed and datement, and whoever do, those are things that can be put out to the public. But there are things, I think, that are policy, that involve long-term planning, should go through the communications committee, with the approval of the board president and vice president.
So you, you, what you requested is a, a goal to, to establish, or look into a communications committee?
Right, which would be, we fall into the. Right. Which would be, we fall into the, I don't know, we looked at this, but I'm sure we've got two or three that we fall into. Generalize, consider the specifics for us as a board.
Remember, that's, that's, that, what you just picked up was goals, or that came out of the standard coverage. So I'm just saying, that, if you were looking to try to find where it fit, it could fit, probably fit in there, but I think, more importantly, let's put it out there, so that we can see it, and then we can start talking about it at some point, to see, see how that's gonna, how that's gonna make sense.
Right. I just think that there's something that we should have to check some balances.
Sure.
And then the second, I think we need to establish a research, planning, and inspection division within our fire district. And now, it's Chief Navarro, basically. I mean, he's working on the accreditation project and so on. He coordinated the standards of coverage report with the vendor correct. So we basically have not, we have an informal research, inspection, and planning part of our fire district. And when Manny retires, I don't know, is that gonna continue? And I think that, that's something that maybe not fall under the board, but I think it's something that I can see the progress that the chief's staff has made relative to this, and gone forward with the planning, creating a strategic plan. And I think-
Would that for more fall on staffing? If you're saying it's not gonna be, fall on the board, and it has to go into operations, and that it revolves, involves staffing?
So, well, just like Chuck said, and we wanna improve our response time, we as a board also want to improve their planning and research and inspection function of the fire districts, so they're more effective. And I think that falls under our responsibility also.
So you're talking about a goal, then, would be what?
A goal would be for, to direct the chief to come back with us or his staff, and-
That's not, that's not a goal.
Okay. Well, a goal is to establish a research, planning, inspection division within our, our fire district.
There you go. That's all, there you go.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You know, we've had a lot of discussion the last couple of months about apparatus and the, you know, the equipment we have now, and some of the things that are on the horizon. I would like to see a goal directed towards equipment acquisition process, you know, specifically make sure that we have a, a process in place that fully accounts for current costs, projected costs, with an end goal of having, you know, the most cost-efficient, the best equipment available to us.
So the goal would be to-
Ensure that we have a equipment acquisition process in place.
I think that guy recorded.
Yeah.
She got it.
She got it?
All right. Virginia?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to what I've always said, which is the financial goals. And so I think that last year, when Chuck and I worked on kind of the themes, one of the big things for us, and chime in here, Chuck, if I'm not representing your views accurately, was to make sure that we've got a multi-year financial model. I mean, we talked about that, talked about it as a board, which is to basically codify financial constraints and commitments, which I think I've mentioned it before, you know, pay down of the pension liabilities. We've been very good about that, and we've been very disciplined about that. And I think it helps keep us, you know, financially healthy as well. And also to develop and build a financial model for operations in the CIP, which, you know, I just, the financial goals are always, in my mind, the top priorities of what the board should be doing for any public agency, you know, in turn, because we have to be the stewards of the public's money, the taxpayer's money. So I'm just gonna go back to that, that, that one goal that Chuck and I put on last year's report, the memos that we sent out to the board. That, and then the, well, and I know we're gonna be talking about this, the community alert notification system, which I guess could go under, you know, a bigger umbrella. And I think we're, we're going to the East Palo Alto City Council meeting tonight, right where you're gonna be-
That's correct, giving a presentation.
Giving a presentation on that to their community. And then, of course, the succession planning, which is kind of slowly but surely, you know, being undertaken right now. I think we have an HR committee meeting on Thursday for just the deputy chief process. But first and foremost for me is just the financial, the goals, just to keep that out there, because I think that's what the public expects of us as a board.
Okay, so, so is there, yes?
Well, I just, I'm not sure if, let me say it this way. In looking through all the materials that we put out there, I went back over the goals that we enunciated over the last year or so, and there weren't any that I wanted to get rid of. So all of those goals seemed relevant to me. I thought your initial question was, in addition to those things, what more would we like to add?
Correct.
So I'm seconding what Virginia said, but I wanna make sure-
But we haven't achieved some of those, that's why I brought them up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I'd like to see four, but not just the ones you said. I agree with those, and those other ones as well.
Okay, so I think you guys are in agreement that what's already been out there is part of something we need to-
Move forward.
Move forward, okay, gotcha.
I mean, because we haven't really done those. That's why I don't want them to kind of fall off the radar.
Okay, gotcha. So anything else on the standards of coverage, everything? Jim mentioned three items that he would like to move forward with. Will anybody else have, I just wanted to deal with standards of coverage, Bill.
So the standards of coverage stuff, a lot of that hinges on the finances, too, right? So that, so I don't want them to be excluded from each other.
Yeah, but I just wanna stay on the standards of coverage. Is there anything else on that? Everybody in agreement? Jim mentioned three, you wanna move forward. Anybody else have any comments of any they wanna move forward? I would like to see all of them move forward to some point, but we need to put it, put it somewhere. Every, all the recommendations, we just need to try to figure out where to put them. So, I mean-
Was this year this record, or do we need to do it?
No, it's in, it's in your package.
No, I mean, this was-
We're gonna go to that.
Oh, okay.
Give us a little moment.
All right.
So on the board goes for 2018, I mean, 19 and, 18 and 19, are there any ones that need to be taken off, or is there any more that need to be put in for, for this year? I think Chuck said he thinks everything is okay, and you don't have any more that need to be added. Rob, do you have any, beyond what's already existing?
Just, and it maybe is involving response time.
Stay there, go.
As Chuck mentioned, is the aspect that we have to depend on consolidated fire for all our hazmat responses. And I know it's, that's the agreement that we have within the county, but because of that lengthy response that we had in July with Facebook, I know we don't control the responses in the hazmat group, but it appears that's something that, I don't know, the entire county needs to work on relative to the response for those type of hazmat instances.
So is there a goal, is it in there somewhere plus?
Again, with a, with a consolidated speed response to hazmat, and it's something that we don't control, as, as being one of those, what, 14 partners that depend on that one group, or that hazmat group.
Yeah, 10 different fire agencies. Now, I would say this, our hazmat and the district responses are way down compared to years ago, because we don't have the same threat profile. You know, no more romics, ray cams, you know, the plating plants, the wreckers, you know, life science stuff is down. SRI doesn't do a lot of the project programs it used to do, which were very dangerous and not very well done. So our frequency is way down. I think if there was one thing I would say where there's, I see a concern, is because the cooper, which is the hazardous material fees, there's less people using, less businesses using hazardous materials. So as a revenue stream to the county hazmat group, that's a loss, right? So less industrial users means that they don't get as many fees. Tech is more of a threat, like, from a terrorist event, right? So the hazmat team responds to those, like we saw with the mailroom incident, but there's really no way they capture revenue because of that, unless they build them back for their suits, which they do and so forth. So it's a different, it's a different paradigm.
Build food back.
Whoever they call, wherever, wherever they go for a call, they will build that company back for the equipment that they use.
For the cleanup, or, right?
Yeah, I mean, but see, cleanup, now you're assuming it's a, hazardous materials event.
Right. No, I'm just saying, but the Facebook thing was-
They'll build for their equipment, they'll build for, I don't know, but the time. But, you know, again, the sustainable costing, the actual fees for hazardous material permits and so forth for the county is down, just because there's not as many. The good news is, there's not many bad companies that do that.
Well, also, the good news, too, is that Facebook moved their mailroom into another county, which is, which is a good thing also.
Wow.
So we would have that.
Still a jig on that one.
I just wanted to do a time check. Here's 2:23, and there's, there's a couple more items, at least four more items that we, I think, hopefully, we need to get to. You like, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more. And actually, that last one, when I talked about equipment, I think is captured in recommendation B, boy. Continue to maintain the apparatus and equipment replacement plan, and ensure sufficient funds are available to replace apparatus.
Which one is that? Recommendation?
B.
B?
With regard, the other one in the SOC that caught my attention was the, the pre-planning.
The what?
Element.
Pre-planning.
I'm looking for the item number here. E Edward, implement a standardized program for pre-incident target hazard planning for operations personnel. Again, that's when Chief, I would like to hear from you, is that a sound finding? I don't know what that's based on. If it is, I think we should have a goal of pre-incident target planning. Assuming-
What is that?
Right, so, yeah, we'll respond in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's odd.
Just real quick, can you make sure you explain what that is? Because there was some talking here about automated dispatch, and I didn't quite understand it.
Yeah. We'll do, we'll go, like you said, we're going through each one. I already last night worked on who it's gonna get assigned to, just because that's the next step. Like you said, we didn't write the report, they did. Now we have to respond to the report, which we haven't done, so, yet. And I didn't wanna do it in their presentation, because it's their presentation.
So turning to, on page 27, of the package you got out, on the lower left-hand corner, you talk about the grand jury report. Are there any, there's several things that are there. Are there any things that tickle, we wanna try to? So, on page 27, at the bottom.
27, in the staff report, or the-
Staff report.
Okay.
You're talking about the grand jury report.
I'm looking at-
I have a quick question.
Down at the bottom.
All of the members?
Down, down at the floor.
Not in this corner, sorry. That clearly is the one, oh, got it, got it, got it. Sorry, I was looking at another one.
So everyone had to take a look at, did you, let's take a few minutes to kind of pull out things that you wanna kind of focus on, or a goal, or just leave it in a, okay, die out on the line?
Robbie, can I ask a quick?
Yes, sir.
There were two, E and F were two different responses, chief. Why were there two different responses?
Where you back at?
The one you referred to.
So you're talking about the most, the most recent one?
Well, they were within six days of each other, October 9th and October 3rd. They were just-
Same years?
Oh, no, it's a different year.
Yeah, no, that's why they're different. The second one was a follow-up from them, where we were.
Oh.
And so we had to respond to that. But we're not, there's a whole calendar of timing on all of those. So if you go to the first one, that gives you the broader schedule of what, you know, so they, to the point, they're following up on, on the reports.
Gotcha.
You know, so I didn't want you to think as if the first one, the second one shows that, hey, they're asking, what's the latest? It's not, it's not gonna go away. So you can either proactively address it, or you can reactively, you know, go, well, we're not there, or we didn't do it.
So is there, are there any on page, starting on page 27, moving forward to the first one, that we, the board wanna put out there as part of a goal that we wanna try to tap over the next six months or so? Because I think in order for us to get through it, again, it takes half time, it takes us looking at it and developing a response. So we'll pull it out right now. So thinking in terms of the six months a year.
You need from the page, I'm looking at page 28, sorry. Are you looking at the findings or whatever? Because I'm looking at finding number three.
Okay.
The district's deployment system meets the current, the district's current demands, but it becoming strained, especially east of one-on-one, which actually the standards of coverage, standards of cover report notes as well. So I think that as a policy, we have to figure out how we're gonna deal with that and fund whatever resources we need to fund for.
So do you want to throw that in?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is finding number three?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think this was when Jim was on the grand jury, right? 2018, Jim?
You could just look in more.
No, 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 but I just wanna make sure I'm interpreting that correctly, that they're-
I can never-
Yeah, you got it, you got it.
I can't deny that it was involved.
No, no, based on what it says, I would like, anything that we can come up with with regard to the east side.
Well, that's where we had a discussion. We have a discussion on it. Right now, we just want the goal.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it says finding number three.
So that's one. F, F3, 2018. Anything else, anybody?
Finding for your district's deployment system?
It says-
That is becoming strained, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
What's the bottom left-hand page of?
28.
28.
Okay. And finding three says the district's deployment system meets the district's that one?
Yes.
Anything else? Anyone else? If not, I'm good. Jim?
No.
Between now and next week? I mean, I'm trying to get them all out. So the next report has to do with, I'm starting on page 37, strategic planning. And there were recommendations made on that. If not, then we'll move on to the next one. Anything to add on joint board priorities? And there were, and here where it starts listing the things that are, and there are items posted on those things. So are there any, any further ones to be added to this? And then it capture on page-
40.
413, it captures, it talks about the physical responsibility, employee relationships, and then it, some items that Chuck mentioned, and Jim mentioned, and then Rob also mentioned on page 420. 427, page 46, and the same.
I mean, the thing that I might, physical responsibility overlaps with what I mentioned earlier, so it's the same.
Okay.
You know what, but it's in this document, so I wanna make sure that-
I just wanna know if anybody got anything else to add. Now, we're gonna be moving to attachment A, which is on page-
I'm fine with my 29.
You, you okay? Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else anybody wanna add? Yeah, there's a little note in here from finance committee, talking about LT, capital, one thing, I don't know who wrote this.
Which one is this?
There's a, it's right on after page 50, there's a little note.
That's Virginia's, right?
I think it's final one.
Oh, that's my handwriting.
50.
That's, that was from our lunch, Chuck, for the finance committee, which is basically what I talked about earlier.
Should we toss it out or keep it?
Well, it's already, I mean, it's the same thing as we talked about earlier. So, I mean, it's toss out or keep it? So, I mean, it's tossed out or keep it, I mean, it doesn't, this hour, keep it, it doesn't matter. The issue's still the same, that we did agree on the, the call.
Okay. Uh, on page, look like fifty-three, uh, Jim, there was some, uh, memo from you to Virginia regarding, uh, like regarding, regarding, proposal to generate a favorable field strategic planning meeting. I guess this was in two thousand nineteen.
You know, have, have we captured the goal of a, uh, a public alert system?
I brought it up.
Having an effective public alert system, I think that should be.
Yeah.
It's in here somewhere where.
I brought it back when I brought it to fiscal staff, the notification alert system.
Can you, can you leave notifications?
Yeah.
So that was in your twenty-eighteen as well?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so a lot of this is repeating itself. It's fine, just so that we're making sure that things capture.
Everything, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So there's another documentation that's in here from, uh, Jim Harrell, Chief Harrell, regarding, uh, senior workshop notification, I think. There's another information here from the meeting. Uh, now someone brought up this Senate Bill number one thirty.
I think that was Jim, right?
I think so.
In terms of, uh, to be looked at as some goal, long-term goal?
No, I think.
Yeah, it goes to the broad topic of, uh, public safety alert system.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Which you get assigned to a committee.
Right. And there was some other bills in there also. Uh, and then there's the attachment G, um.
I think more of the same.
More than.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was, I think when you wrote that, it was more for information purposes, right?
Yeah.
Then attachment H is from Rob, did he strategic plan over the theme?
I think we pretty much, because India is also the audio system and our relationship with Cadney County. And under Employee Relations, uh, do you have something to add? Uh, just the aspect involving recruitment and that you should be a little bit more out there to try to work the way San Mateo County Sheriff's Office does, to try to recruit
What's the goal?
More applicants.
What's the goal?
Goal is to recruit more, uh, individuals that represent the community.
Go ahead, go ahead. Going in the helper.
There you go.
The role of the board chair. Okay, um, you had another one, Rob, on page seventy-seven? Is that more of the same?
That just involves the boot camp where it falls into another goal that I just mentioned.
About recruitment.
Recruitment that.
Diversity.
Individuals within our, that actually represent our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Jim, on page eighty-one, there was, I feel like there was a.
Water supply issues in, in East Palo Alto.
Which is.
I, I think we captured that as a, as a goal, just, yeah.
Okay.
I could, I can just say, I think we buried it in some way. So it got pushed into improve relationships with other agencies. And all we really did last year was talk to the cities and counties. We really didn't talk to any water agencies or anything. So I'm, I'm just saying it's gotten kind of buried.
Can I, can I just add, uh, more information? I think the water, the city, it's not like the city don't have water, enough water, since they made their, their agreement with Palo Alto and Mountain Dew. It's their water system.
Their infrastructure.
Their infrastructure is a problem. And, and where, how we would impact that and what we could do as a district, I'm not sure. Maybe there's a discussion on what can we do to, to help the city in that regard. I think there's recommendation, like Chief Johnson gave, went out there and gave a recommendation about a bigger pipe and they want to stay with this smaller pipe. So, you know, I mean, beyond the fact of, you know, they want money from us, that's a whole nother question. But, uh, I, I think the city have certain resources available to them and they can start making those changes. They just have to get around to telling, you know, environment, uh, public works to get busy on it, so.
Does that still, could I ask the chief question? Does that still preclude us from getting a class one because of that water problem?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
So it's a tremendous, so it's a tremendous problem, not only for us as a fire district, but it kind of affects the whole public safety response system because that, that water resource is inadequate?
Well, resource, remember, the water is.
Well, for us to use as a fire supply.
Water is, is. Infrastructure is, is, is a problem.
Yeah, the infrastructure is.
So currently there's a seventy-two million dollar price tag. Now, I don't know, we got seventy-two million dollars loan, but I, to, to help them in that regard so we can get that class one. But that's what they're facing. Now they are, they're proposing, please help me out, Chief Johnson, that, that there are, there are phases in which they want to go finance and, and work on and try to begin to, to tackle the whole thing.
Well, the state can bury all the power lines and then they can help with the, with the water critical infrastructure.
We have, to put it in context, we have five water companies, okay? Five of them, not just one. Couple are problematic, and if you recall, last year, the biggest one, who's actually been our biggest supporter advocate, came before you and did a presentation and we didn't endorse them. So on different fronts, they have different issues, different needs, and they're, you know, Cal Water's probably the most reliable, best partner. But, yeah, the other ones, East Palo Alto Water, O'Connor, those are.
They all lie from the hand.
Challenges, right?
I think, I think we could make it, if we made this a goal. I mean, we don't have to approve projects where we don't think that the capacity to fight a fire is sufficient. And that's something that we, we can do.
But you wouldn't, because you're, we don't. That's the far more show, that you're top of the code.
Yeah, so we, we don't already. So just so you know, when it comes, this is actually a matter we probably really can't dive much into. So the water companies have one obligation, which is to provide clean, safe drinking water.
Period.
That, that's their obligation. Do you not have an obligation to provide firewater?
Right.
So that's why the code actually is what we enforce, which is dealing with how do you get that firewater? If it's provided by a water municipality, then we work with it to adhere to it. If not, then the code allows us to work on other issues, which we have developers that do that. So we do deny plans based upon the available water, but then we have to work on other solutions.
You know, one goal could be make sure that we communicate to the community we serve the costs associated with a deficient water supply system.
Yes.
You know, that we don't have that class one rating, which raises the insurance costs for everyone else.
Sure, the public information, I think, needs to be out there.
That, that could be our goal.
Yeah.
And could you state that?
Rob, before you go on, could you state that as a goal that we can kind of look at and capture?
Communicate to the public we serve, uh, the costs associated with deficient water supply systems.
Well, yeah, and infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's not necessarily the same thing.
The last time this worked is when we had a grand jury report in Abington and the three entities, Cal Water, the fire district and the town, all worked together to try and resolve part of the issue there. Meaning that we installed more hydrants, that we were able to upgrade the sizing of the mains in some cases, so there was an overall improvement to the water supply system.
And I think, I'm going to get through to it. I think when we have this study session around the issues of the East Palo Alto, that that needs to be a part of this overall discussion and then a plan based upon how we deliver.
Because John's right, it's all about reliability. Because if you don't have reliability, that's when you can have a catastrophe, a fire, when you suck a main or blow up a valve or whatever, because trust me, you'll wipe out a fire plump doing that stuff.
And we're in a good position to help get along that road because there are developers coming in. They want their project approved, but they screaming about how much that water tank going to cost? Add to the project, Rob.
Chief, a question for the chief. In San Francisco, in some of the major intersections, they have water storage, right?
Yeah.
Uh, that doesn't have anything to do.
Sisterns. But remember, we proposed to put a sistern in downtown that we, the district, would pay for and the board voted it down.
Well, maybe that's a.
You mean.
Is that a solution, John?
Not this one, but a fire one.
It's a long-term solution, yes, which we've been in those discussions. The city's already looking at revamping their master, water master plan. And, but right now, they need to deal with getting water from point A to point B right now. So they're getting their biggest thing for the buck.
All right, so we're working relative to that, trying to get it through, okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Rob. Wells, wells are not the answer, they, it's how they tell you it's a well.
Okay.
No tank, who cares?
Uh, attachment K, there were, um, face, we're on this face needed analysis. We haven't gotten our report yet.
April.
April, so, um, we can probably hold off on this until June, May of June, something like that. Uh, attachment L, um, there was a vote from, uh, Director Crowley and Director McGlocklin regarding, uh, potential data or in process. What is this actually burning?
This is for the ambulance, JPA, right?
So what's the goal on this one?
No, I think this was the broader issue of impact fees.
Oh, oh, am I, oh, I'm looking, am I looking at the wrong one?
Uh, page eighty-seven.
Oh, I'm looking, sorry, I meant page eighty-nine, sorry.
Okay, so now. I, I think this should still be a goal of ours to, uh.
We'll be under the financial.
Well, 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 what's the goal? I'm sorry.
Uh, evaluate all potential funding sources related to new development.
Yeah.
But that just means we're not, we're not going to get this to stay.
That's correct.
We know we're not adding it, this isn't adding.
So it's not adding.
We'll, we'll keep it in.
It's in there.
Yeah.
But I'd put it under the financial one broadly. Yeah.
So the goal is to.
We don't want it to go.
Discuss impact fees.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, basically, yeah, and we can talk about it later, but.
Right, that's what we're going to be talking about in the next session. Okay, item number M, attachment M, um.
That's the ambulance JPA.
And that's the.
When is that coming?
That part's done.
That part's been done.
They've got an agreement again.
It's the other part.
Parts of the part, parts of the whole, parts of.
I would kind of put that, um, I put that on the back burner for now, but that's for me and we didn't.
Can you speak up a little?
I, I'm saying for this, I would kind of put it on the back burner for now. Not that it's not important, but I think, um.
If, if it's a goal there, then we need to have it so we can talk about it at the next meeting. If not.
Well, we could talk about it at the next meeting and decide what the board wants to do.
Uh, no, it's, it's going to go on, it's going, it's going on a list of here's all the potential goals. And we're going to recycle it into one of those hoppers. And then we're going to re, we're going to prioritize.
Well, Jim was your liaison, what do you think?
I don't know that there's any smoldering issues there.
Right, that's.
And let's just drop it again.
With this JPA.
That's what I said, just put it on the back burner.
Everybody agree we just dropped that item number?
M.
Yeah, M is in Mary.
M, Mary.
M is in Mary, yeah.
Okay, cool.
So that one's out.
Yes.
Item N? Sure, does S S seven senior policy on board inter, interaction and rules of engagement?
That's done.
That's done.
That's done, okay. Attachment O? Compensation plan, you like for management employees, including chiefs?
You know, I, I think this one is related to that, um.
It's something that's part of the continuous evaluation of the chief, for sure. And I think that needs to go as a priority of somewhere on one of the, but we need to get to it.
Your next comp plan coming up is ASME, because that's coming through.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to look at that anyway, whether or not it's a goal, we're going to have to deal with it.
Well, it has to be a goal. We, we, we got a lot of goals, we got to figure out where is it, how high, and if our already changed.
Well, no, what I'm saying is if we're dealing with a comp plan with a bargaining unit, whether or not it's a goal, we still have to deal with it.
It was a term on the contract.
Right, that's the thing.
Are we talking about this year or last year?
No, it comes this year, because we did a three-year with them, we did a five-year with IFF. So ASME is coming up.
Yeah, so whether.
I don't remember the date, but it's coming, it's in this year.
Okay.
I think buried in this one is the issue of pensions in excess of the IRS established maximum that Calpurs can pay. So I think the goal is evaluate.
Which actually is, it's going to the Finance Committee. Sorry.
Yeah, just, you know, the goal, evaluate the effect of pensions in excess of the IRS limit on the district, on district finances.
I mean, it's going into the HR committee. Yeah, but that's going to be in the HR committee.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to agree with you that that's an issue, but I don't think it's an issue for ASME.
No.
Okay.
No, but he's saying it was buried in this discussion.
Uh, attachment Z, P, Jim? Wages and compensation.
Is there another way to get, I think, mention on the district, that's a, a four goal, that's we not adding the pot for the next meeting?
No, it's only HR committee, it's going into the HR.
It's going to go on our goal code too.
Yes.
It's going, we're not talking about what's going to come, we're just talking about what's going to be at the next meeting.
Yes.
Attachment P?
I think that's.
Reminder, everybody, it's about two forty-eight.
Yeah.
I mean, if you had to go with.
You know, this is probably connected to the, yeah, to the, the next part, round by nine.
Okay.
Can I ask the chief a question? Somewhere as I read that, that Brenda had been recommending a compensation and benefit study. Does it address these issues that Jim is talking about or different issues, or why is she doing that?
So comp and class is something you do to see a market and area rates, you get updated and you look at positions that you have. That was a goal for last year that didn't get done. Because you need to have that every so many years because it's good information you can use for your data sourcing. Right now, we don't have that. So we need to get a vendor. I know at the time, the, there was some discussion that we would do that in-house, that HR would just do it. I know there was a lot of dissatisfaction with that. I wouldn't recommend that either. I think you want a third-party look so that, yeah, a professional does that kind of analysis and can hand it to you. So there is, in fact, Kathy, she's got an email from me, it's from Brenda, because I went back when I was doing this. I went, we never did that, but we need to do that. Because we're technically, you don't want to be behind, especially when you're looking at an ASME agreement. You want to know what's the market for positions and so forth.
Is everyone classed, correct, please?
Okay. So the last two things I want to talk about, and hopefully we may not necessarily finish them here now, but there's that two handouts, somebody made one of where these handouts came from. One of them talks about study session items and the other one talks about important items. So I want to talk about the study session items, then I want to turn to Jim and talk about the, uh, move further about the important items. The studies is set, list of study, uh, session items is a list of items that I think for the most part, I mean, I'm not aware of, maybe the rest of the board member may be aware of what's going on in each of these areas. So the goal here now in the next couple of minutes is just brainstorm. Are there any other study session items that, that you think that you may want that at some point the board need to kind of collectively, uh, like we're going to do with ASD and to sit down in a private little conversation or at the brew, uh, to get all the issues out on the table so that we can have one voice and one understanding of what's going on. Because you know, yeah, each one of them gets hit by people in the community about issues. Some of these issues, they get hit by the newspaper and a variety of different, um, other people asking questions. So it's good for me, I know, to, to understand what's going on in the twenty's areas, the system right here. Rob, so, so quickly, are there, if you, if you take a look at the list, uh, and on the back of it kind of gives some guiding principles in terms of generating this, why this, why this list exists? And, and if you have something now that you want to add to the list, let's add to the list. If there's something you want to take out, take out, we can do that too.
Yes, Rob, Z.
I'm not sure how this will get used, but are you suggesting you would take two of these items at each meeting and discuss them?
We haven't started to talk about that process. That could be one process way of getting through it. Uh, it may not, we're not gonna get through it before next two meetings. It may take us all year to get through it. But we, we, that's something the board got to decide. All of them are so important that we need to really have a, all be all on the same page on, on what's going on.
Okay, so let me just say, looking at this, it seems to me there's different importance levels here. For example, number twelve is a goal that was on, one of our goals for last year. That to me is essential. We ought to be addressing it about six months ago. Whereas number fourteen about grants, we're, I don't think we're gonna gain grants, and I, I don't feel any need to be discussing that. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what you're gonna do with this.
What we gonna do with it, it, the goal is to be educated about what, what, uh, one, are there issues there? And, you know, what problems may exist now, may in the future, we need, the board need to start planning for. Um, and like I say, some of these, I mean, succession planning is something we started two years ago, and we haven't gotten to it. So board need to kind of sort this out and say, hey, these are the ones that rise to the top, and we need to sort. And then from that, we can begin to set times and when to make that happen, so we get educated. It can be at the board meeting, it can be special board meeting, it could be whatever the board decides.
Could this go to a committee meeting, a committee also?
Well, no, this needs to go to the whole board. We all need to be aware of this, this thing. I think for the town of Aspen, I wouldn't see this fit into a committee meeting. We all need to be aware of what's going on. Succession planning, you know, maybe that can go to a committee, I don't know. But that's something we need to talk about, and I think that's part of being able to kind of maybe at our facilitated meeting by the consultant, we can get at that. But right now, we'd like to see if there are any other important items that we need to talk about.
What do you mean by putting the finance committee as number eight?
Uh, what I mean, I just took that from a variety, if you look at finance committee, and this is not a priority list. Trust me, it's not a priority list. It's my mind was putting down things in order which came to me. But this is even not a priority.
Why do you leave the resources to me? I'm just wondering, why finance and not other committees?
It's a bullet list, right?
Yeah, that's what it is. Tell me, I mean, we're not talking.
Could I add something to it?
Yeah, boy.
No, uh, since we may use drones for inspections of solar panels, is that true?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually gonna be used.
Do we have this, you know, uh, like privacy policy type stuff, where that if we're flying over somebody's house and.
Yeah, we did.
It's all been done over since the start of this program back to what, twenty sixteen?
Two thousand fourteen, no, fourteen, fourteen fifteen.
We have a program called Drone Sense that actually records where the cameras are directed, what it's seeing, so that if anybody has a public request, they can see that's what it is, what we saw, what we're looking at.
So we have the S A N network all set up to store this stuff.
We still need to work on a full policy, but we already have a policy with, with imaging and data, but we need to make the policy specific.
So, so the last issue, you could.
Well, the thing, um, as I said, that.
Study session.
Like, storage of, you know, how long do we have to store these things? I know that what, there's a, what, five-year rule for the state?
Actually, for us, uh, the state actually says that since this is related to construction, we have to keep it for the life of the building.
So is that right?
Yes.
So Rob, are you saying that this kind of.
We already, that's state policy and where, where I got.
If, if you're recording, when you're inspecting, you don't always have to record. You can see something too. So again, to John's point, you know, say we're on a fire, we don't always record everything. And we're taking pictures now all over different, like the construction projects, we have aerial photography of all the progression of construction projects as an example. But on inspection, you don't need to always record, you can just look.
So, Rob, are you saying that you would like more information about the drone program? They have a, and that, this could be a study session for the EPREP committee. Where you just, you know, maybe somebody just come in, just, you know, just talk.
I think there is some, um, privacy concerns with, with this drone usage, and I just wanna make sure that. Yeah. Worried policy with it, that's all.
Yeah, I'm saying, where do we talk about it? At the committee level or at overall, as pulling all the board together?
We've talked about it at the board level.
Well, Mr. President, whatever you think, but how's that?
Okay, well.
You wanna bring it to emergency prep, uh, that you're working on?
We can do that. All right, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Virginia has to leave, and the last item, you talked about recording items, so.
Can I give you an, an item of urgency?
Yeah, yeah.
So one of the things, as you know, we're, Ryan's not here today. I was hoping he was gonna be here, his son was sick. But, um, you know, the SERC program, CCM is gonna change. Those are personnel that are leading. You know, sometimes, you know, sad as that is, it gives you an opportunity. But, uh, you know, I think, I personally know there's different issues, concerns and so forth that we have, that we get. These, the folks, certain folks wanted to do a five oh one C three, they want some level of autonomy. There's been discussion about equipment that they may need, if they need it, there's gonna be grants. We're in the process to develop the budget for next year. There is no grant process, there are no funds. If that's something you wanna create, you need to create a, a whole apparatus around it. That won't happen, happen overnight. So there's work that needs to get done there, if this is a priority. Everything on, from restructuring how we do something, to if we put a grant process in place, rules and things around it. Including in the budget process, obligating funds. So we, we keep saying we're, we have things, we keep saying we're gonna do, but we don't do it. So then when it happens, it's like, well, that mechanism isn't there. That mechanism isn't there. If you want it to be there, you want it to change, now's a good time to do it.
That's a good one, that's a good one.
I'll get with Michelle and try to lead up, Chuck, and I'll do committee.
For what?
Emergency prep committee, try to formulate some found, some basics for you guys.
Before you do that, Robert, if you don't mind me asking, there's a second part of this phase. You, you need to, I think each committee should have all, be privileged to all of the thoughts. That over the last two years that have been generated around emergency prep as a committee. So you can have in your little hot hand, everything, so you can begin to look at everything, not just bits and pieces of. So this process is to kind of put everything on the table.
Head north on Santa Monica Avenue.
Okay, so sift through it, you know, have us all to sift through it, put, put it in those places, those committees. And then hand off, hopefully with a priority list, to, to the committee, and let the committee start working on it. That, you know, rather than, than, not only you got the benefit of the whole board, understanding what is important for each of the committees to work on. Because there's a limited time, limited resources, so it has to be prioritized. And so that's what the second phase of this process is all about.
Well, I just heard a concern from the chief, and I'm, I'm ready to help him and his staff.
Oh, yeah.
With at least one part of it, before we have to meet with another consultant. And I think he can give us the problem areas that you want us to look at.
Ryan's very aware of that. That's who I'd assign, because I needed to ask, who would you assign? And Ryan knows a lot of that, what's that? But I also, you know, I'm sensitive to what Director Jones says. I think this is a board-wide concern. Everybody's concerned about the civilian volunteers, the funding, all those different things. So however you wanna work it out, I'm just telling, we have vacancies that occur. We didn't need to start making some moves. The question would be then, what is the board, is the overarching world of SERC, CCM, volunteers, five oh one C threes?
Correct, exactly.
Grants, what do you want this thing to look like? Because I don't know myself.
And that's where, part of getting all those thoughts, and at our next meeting, we will be able to kind of take each theme by theme area. Um, that in terms of especially emergency prep is on there. Uh, and then, so now you got all your thoughts when you go into the committee of what the rest of the board may be thinking about this, which.
Well, let's just bring it to the, can we put it on the board agenda for next time?
Well, if you want to study, study sessions, if you want, that's a good one.
I mean, if that's what we need to do, and, you know, let's not, you know, let's skip the committee, and let's just bring it straight to the board.
Well, it's a study session about understanding all the issues. Chief had just mentioned some of them. May, if that's all them, okay, that's all them.
Well, there's more.
There may be more. So that's where we sit down and have a study session, like on all of these, to understand all of the ramifications, all of the issues and problems. And the success that's going on with the program, so that we as a board can create this policy about what we wanna do with emergency preparedness.
That's why I think on, what is it, the eighteenth, our meeting, right?
Right.
Let's put it as an agenda item, speak about the emergency prep and see where we're going, and let's just bring it directly to the board. And have them give us, have, have SERC do some type of a presentation, see where they're at, and have all of us as a board discuss it.
Yeah, we can have, I mean, that's. The goal is to have a discussion.
Let's just skip the board meeting, let's just, I mean, the committee meeting.
Here, the term Sean would be helpful, because again, I think that part of, if there's an expectation there'd be funding, we don't have that.
All of us talk.
That's not set up. If, if it is, they're gonna be more autonomous, because they're gonna have a five oh one C three. Then is the person that we hire, the next person, we're gonna start actually giving this community outreach, neighborhoods, and get ready. Stop the bleed, things that we could do, is that our focus? I, I don't know, I've heard we wanna do it, but we had a person that are doing CCM, he's not gonna be there anymore, so which way we're gonna point this at?
Maybe good, just for all of us, what are you talking about?
So, so, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get you out of here on time, but, you know, I'm, I'm.
That's why, if the chief feels that it's, it's an important entity, which he does. I think our February eighteenth meeting, we should have it as an agenda item, and try to have the SERC people come in. Uh, all of us as a board discuss it, and then start basic relative, where the board gets their feet. And then refer to who you want, uh, what topics you want us to talk about as a committee, or work on as a committee.
Well, the, the board as a whole will, will make those decisions, not me as, as president, because I think this whole process has come up with it. I, you know, to me, if, if the agenda for, uh, in February lends itself to, to have that as part of it. Because, you know, everybody's trying to get out of here around two o'clock, two hours, right, two or three hours. If it doesn't add any other burden on the, the agenda, I'm all for it. If the rest of the board members wanna, wanna have it at that.
How about this? Because I, this just strikes me as probably the right way to do it. How about I write a staff report with what I see, the challenges, problems, and, you know, maybe directional changes could be. So you can look at it, and then we've got some dialogue about where it needs to go. If you have an opportunity, you don't have people in there. We start as OEM, and it's bigger. If you look at the SOC two, it's got recommendations regarding emergency preparedness with jurisdictions. It's all relative. It's all part of what they're gonna do.
And we'll have it.
And the poor guy's, he's a unit of one right now, pretty much, Ryan. So just him.
Right, I know, and it's a lot of work. So what, so having that next board meeting is, is something that everybody agreed to?
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear from, you know, the chief on the topics you just, you just mentioned.
And what direction?
You have some recommendations.
Yeah, I'll give you some recommendations. I mean.
There you go.
We need four people in there, I got one person.
Yeah, but I'm sure you have, you and your staff have some ideas.
The idea of having Sean there, it's a number two.
No, Sean should be there.
Right, this, we have, be at a board meeting, right?
He's been wanting to meet with us, yes.
Okay, all right, cool. Uh, okay, great. Uh, last thing, uh, important items. That is a overaccumulation of at least this year, maybe, uh, last year of items that, um. In terms of, um, something that the board needs to kind of, uh, are important items that we need to kind of figure out how to handle those.
You know, Robert's created this laundry list, right? You just said in soliciting additions.
Right, exactly.
Sure, I, I think we're just looking for some clarity. Is there anything that you would add to this, this list of eleven items?
I think we've, we've pretty much covered it almost. Chuck, do you want anything? I, I mean, I'm, I think it's fine. Thank you, Robert, for putting that together.
Are there any others? Uh, if not.
Well, some of these have already handled on a regular schedule, like the harassment, policy training. Don't we have to do that every two or three years? We have to.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure why we should deal with it on an agenda.
This is not an agenda. This is a, a, a list of development of some of the important items. And at some point, we gotta, gotta make it happen. Like, two years of last year, we didn't make that happen. So hopefully the goal is to make it happen this year. We need to figure out timing on it. And so, um, in thinking about what are some things that, that should be talked about, the thought was, it came up then, well, are there any other important items? That the board need to be aware of and should talk about? So now it's time, and I'm throwing it out there to the rest of the board member, are there any other important items that need to be talked about? Um, let's put it on the list, we've scheduled time, and we just make it happen. So hearing none, so I assume that this is a complete list.
Okay.
We'll start from this point. Um, or anybody wanna take anything out? We can do that too, but we'll start from this point, you know, man.
What, what did you mean when you said two years we didn't make that? What, what did we do in two years?
Uh, the Brown Act training, from the, from my understanding, the last one with the Brown Act training was when, um, last year? No, two years ago? I, I didn't get it, uh, any training other than going online and getting it. Uh, is there any other before, three years ago?
I think there's a, there's a little bit of a misnomer, because I know that last year, Virginia's gone, but her desire was to do some stuff as a group. But that is not how you've done it before. Could be a way to do it. I think that's actually part of the discussion, is if you wanna do some of these things collectively, individually, however you wanna do them.
So Director Jones, was that in the board policy manual, that there would be around that training every two years?
That's, I, I, that's where I got it, I think I got it.
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway, so we got marching orders on this. We will, uh, discuss further when some of this may happen, for, that the board might wanna have, and then we'll go from there.
Do we need to set a date for our facilitated goal-setting meeting?
That would be ideal, I think, for now, we can, uh, so that, that, that at least staff can have some idea when, when that maybe it happened, and so working towards that.
So I've asked her, she and I have been texting back and forth from Belinda.
Right.
And, uh, she's gonna be gone for ten days coming up at, at the end of the month. I think she's available first part of next month. So I'll, I'll get the dates, but if we can get available dates too, in that period time, that would be great.
Ideally, if we had, I don't know if we'd deal with, um, Doodle? It's a, it's a.
Doodle?
Doodle, you know, the.
Po, yeah.
Yeah, Po, that would be the ideal way to do it, and that way, chart is there, you're feeling, you can make it. And then it all comes back to one source, which will be, uh, so Michelle, and then she can see who's available when. And then she can go back out to you without having to get on the phone and call you and.
Well, the last week of February, I'm out.
Well, that's what Doodle was, that's what Doodle was showing.
Is there, Chris, during an off-site meeting?
Yeah, I prefer that we do, uh, but I'm, I'm, the board feeling, if board members feel comfortable here, I, wherever feel comfortable. I, I feel like that sometimes it's best to kind of get a little bit more, less distraction, even though we don't have as much, much going on with the speaker system. But it's a, it's a more concentrated, uh, focus at that point in time. So it's really up to the board how to.
I, I would favor off-site, for the reasons that you said, yeah.
Do we televise this now? Is this?
Video, YouTube. Yeah. So there is, there are, as we found out on station two, there are challenges wherever you go. We are looking at a third-party company come in and do the mic team, the, the cam, all that, because that's not what we're set up to do. So Jim Lewis actually helped us, I believe, with some of that, gave us some ideas. And then wherever you go, and you gotta be Brown Act compliant, which means you gotta have public access, right? So seating, enough capacity, noticing, you know, talked to Director Jones about some of the hotels, that's always a challenge if you go there. So there's certain places you can do it, and certain places you probably wouldn't wanna do it, but we're looking at that. Because we also understand you wanna get out of here maybe different, a little bit different environment. Somewhere in the district would be good. So at least people live locally, yeah, ideally in the district. Somewhere in the district would be good, so people live locally, yeah, so ideally in the district.
And travel is a huge issue, I mean, if you start at four o'clock, and you have to get...
It depends on what side of the district you're on.
We'll find a good spot, don't you all worry about it.
Let me say, this room worked wonderfully today, in my opinion. I don't have any, I'm not against off-site, but this certainly wasn't bad in any way.
So we'll, we'll look into it, and I guess Michelle will look into it, and then we'll come up. The ideal thing is the date, getting the dates fixed right now, so to accommodate everybody's schedule, and then we'll work on where it's gonna be, does that make sense? So I don't think there's anything else, do you, do you have anything else?
If you could call for public comment, even though, you know...
Public comment, number two, or is it eight? If not, then I will call for German.
No, we have a motion, I'll move that to the adjutant.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose, sorry, all right, we...
Thank you.